Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a board work session on Thursday, November the 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas. For the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, November 9th, 2020 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law, no action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast, Channel 16, and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask you to please refrain from talking while others are speaking, and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode, much like I'm doing right now. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. Our community leadership meets monthly and learns more and more about our district. Those attending today are Ryan Irving, Francis Romero, Marlene Laubrick, Tracy Snyder, Stacy Anderson. Thank y'all very much for being here, and thank you for what you do and dedicate to the district. Thank you for the time for ta- excuse me. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks School District. I already read that one, didn't I? Okay. We're starting over. Okay. The inimication, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, November the 9th, 2020. At this time, good lord, at this time, we will proceed with public comments portion of the agenda. 4A, patrons who have duly registered per policy BED local may address the board and make public comments on the agenda items during or before the board's consideration of the item. The board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. Tonight, we have no one signed up. So before we proceed, I'd like to let the viewing audience know that each month during the board work session, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to the reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under About Us/District Improvement Plan/Gos. And now, we're going to proceed with agenda item 8A under Reports. 8A, the board will provide an update on the 87th legislative session, as if we haven't heard enough politics in the past month. Tonight, our presenters are Dr. Mark Henry, David Thompson of Thompson &amp; Horton LLP. I gotta tell you, David is from West Texas and went to high school with my cousin, so we're almost related. So, thank you. And in West Texas, we are. We will now, I'm sorry, that's it. We got that report. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Trustees, it's my privilege to present David Thompson to you today. All of you up here on the dais know David and what he's meant to, not only public education, but just the state of Texas in general, so it's a real honor to have him here today. He's well-connected. He's argued before the Supreme Court and has always been a great friend of public education, and certainly, we appreciate him. I'm proud to call him not only a friend, but I know he's not a superintendent, but I consider him a colleague also because we've been on some of the same battle lines. So, I ask David if he'd come kind of give us an overview after the election of what we might look forward to with the 87th legislative session. So, David, at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Henry and President Covey and members of the board. It's great to be with you tonight in person. I think we've all seen each other virtually, probably more than we want to over the last several months, but it's wonderful to have a chance to be with you and spend a little bit of time in person. Mark, thank you so much for those kind words, and I very much appreciate them, and I want to reciprocate. During the election, I particularly noted, in fact, I recommended it to a number of other districts and superintendents, how your superintendent, Dr. Henry, had such a Twitter presence for recognizing people for voting, without regard to which side or what issues people, but simply the act as citizens of participating in the process. I thought that was a wonderful example, Dr. Henry, and I passed it on to many others. So, I appreciate you and all the work you're doing and the board. I know y'all are putting in long hours in this very unusual year of 2020. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the election that just occurred on Tuesday and in some parts of the country that is still occurring, and then also look forward to the 87th Texas Legislature, which will begin in the very near future. And I'll see if I can do this right. The first thing I want to start with, just to kind of start with the idea of participation in elections, the interest in this election was very, very high, not quite historic in terms of percentage of participation, but in terms of absolute numbers, we crossed some important thresholds, not only nationally, but here in Texas. And just a little bit of historical perspective, when we look at Texas, our number of registered voters, we nearly hit 17 million. We were at 16.9 and a fraction of registered voters this year, and then not only did, and that was an increase of over 1.8 million registered voters from four years ago, so a very significant increase. We also had very high participation. In fact, one of the highest rates of participation that we've had in Texas going back for several decades, you will see that we had 66% of our total registered voters actually participate in this election, and the mix of those voters was very unusual if you look at the slide because the overwhelming majority of votes that were cast in Texas, well over 9.7 million, were cast early, either by mail or in-person early votes. And one threshold we did pop pass here in Texas, total votes for the first time exceeded 11 million. So, it was like 11 million, 50,000, depending on which race you look at, but that was kind of an important mark. But we had high participation, and we particularly had high participation in the early voting period that we'll see if that is a trend in future elections. And we had a couple of interesting other thresholds. We had, we established a new record, and this will fall into the political trivia category. Who do you think is the one person that has received more votes in an election than any other one person in Texas history? Just think about all the elections over the years we've had in Texas. Who do you think is the top vote getter in any election in the history of the state of Texas?
George Bush.
George got a very high percentage, but there were a lot fewer registered voters at the time, so good guess, but no. Harry, you want to venture a guess? Or do you know?
Was that in recent, including the last election?
Be- Beethoven, good guess, but no. It occurred yesterday, and just remember, if we passed 11 million for the first time in Texas history, we had one candidate for the first time in Texas history get over 6 million votes. And that person was Justice Jane Bland on the Texas Supreme Court. So, just a little bit of election trivia that you can go home and entertain or torture your friends, depending on their point of view about elections with. But quickly moving on, we are looking forward now that the elections are behind us. We really, you know, there's the old saying, "The past is prologue." It's time to look forward, start thinking about where we go from here, and the 87th session will be on us very quickly. As you know, Texas is very unusual. We're one of only five states in the country that meets biennially every other year, and we then meet for a very short period of time, 140 days. We start basically the second Tuesday in January and go for 140 days, usually in sometime around Memorial Day. Now, Mark, you will remember, I once made the comment, I meant it as a joke. I think some people thought I was serious, but we picked that date in January back decades ago, many decades ago, and I made the observation that we picked that Tuesday in January because it allowed you to get to Austin after the first of the year from anywhere in Texas by horse. That's not exactly true, but it, a lot of our dates and how we do things are rooted very much in the past. I guess that would be the takeaway. But we do have some dates that are coming up pretty quickly. On November 9th, members are going to be able to start pre-filing bills, and there'll be a flood of them initially that begin to come in for consideration. If our legislature only meets for 140 days, obviously, a lot of the groundwork has to be done ahead of time before the session starts, so bills will be filed in November and December. The session itself will actually begin on January 12th. The first several weeks will probably be relatively slow as the committees are getting organized and things of that nature in both houses, but will pick up speed pretty quickly. The session ends, and I want to say the regular session ends because I think there is a very good potential this year for a special session. I'll talk about that in a minute. The regular session ends on May 31st. The governor then has a 20-day period whether he can either sign or veto bills. If he does neither, if he simply leaves it alone, it becomes effective by operation of law. That deadline is June 20th. And then, the normal effective dates for bills, unless a different effective date is actually prescribed in the bill, the normal effective date is 90 days after the end of the session. That'll be August 30th. So, those are some of the timeframes we're going to work with. Now, let's look at who our members are going to be. How many of us want to see some more political ads? Did y'all kind of get overwhelmed like I did by those for the last number of months at every commercial break? It is amazing how much time, effort, resources were spent on political advertising in, not only in Texas, but in the nation. We did set records in terms of total dollars. I think the number I saw was 14 billion spent in all combined elections. And our takeaway here in Texas was that almost nothing changed. At the end of the day, we're exactly where we were with basically one exception. On the Senate side, we had a change in the composition by one. The Senate last session in 2019 had 19 Republicans and 12 Democrats. Frankly, one of those Republicans was sort of an anomaly. He had won an election in a special election for a seat that historically was a Democratic seat. In this election, that seat switched back to being a Democratic seat, and so, we will have a Senate that is composed of 18 Republicans and 13 Democrats. So, with that one change that was not unanticipated, that's what the makeup of our Senate will be. On the House side, last session, we had 83 Republicans and 67 Democrats. There'd been some thought that there might be changes in this particular election cycle. At the end of the day, we're going to start the 87th Legislature with 83 Republicans and 67 Democrats. And again, we had two changes, but they netted each other out. We had one Republican defeat a Democratic incumbent. We had one Democrat defeat a Republican incumbent, and that's literally the only changes that occurred in the state of Texas. So, we know who the players are. We know who our senators and representatives will be, and of course, the leadership at a statewide level from the governor, lieutenant governor, were not up for election this cycle, so Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick will continue to provide over the, preside over the Senate, and the House has to organize itself and select its own leader. And if you've been following that process, it's very much underway. They won't formally vote, obviously, until the session convenes in January, but it does look like Chairman Phelan from the Jefferson County area is likely to be the new speaker. So, I think we will have kind of the pieces begin to fall in place a little bit over the next few weeks as we look towards the session. Now, before we look forward, let's take just a quick moment and look backward. In 2019, you will recall, the legislature passed House Bill 3. That was the big education reform bill. In my experience, going all the way back to the 70s, the legislature has one of the major comprehensive kind of cathartic reform efforts in education about once every 10 years. About once every decade, it comes together. House Bill 3 was a 308-page bill, dealt with public school funding, quite a number of changes to the formulas, also a number of other policy areas which you've obviously heard many presentations about. For our purposes, I want to focus on the money. It did put a significant new investment into public education. We had $4.5 billion put into programmatic funding in schools. We had another $2 billion that was put into educator, either salaries or benefits in compensation, and then we had $5 billion that the legislature invested in compressing or pushing down local property tax rates. So, a fairly major investment, about $11 billion all total. Again, part of that is for actual schools to use for your operations. Part of it was really flow-through money that was used to buy down property taxes. Some of the big other components that had a cost to them, we raised at the basic allotment, which is kind of the foundation that everything else gets built on, more significantly than at any time in history in all, in one term. We both mandated and provided some funding for full-day pre-K. We increased funding for compensatory education, created some teacher incentive programs that are optional. Some districts are choosing to apply. Some are taking more of a wait-and-see attitude, and then we created a bonus program for individuals who graduate that meet certain readiness standards for college, career, and military. So, those were some of the quote "new programs," if you will, or new ideas that included that all cost a significant amount of money. Now, let's talk about some of the problems or issues or challenges, depending on your point of view, as we sit here today. Think about what the legislature did during 2019. Where are we today, and what's that going to look like as we go forward into the 87th session in '21? One thing that has happened because of COVID-19 is we've had a tremendous impact on both the enrollment of students, kids showing up and enrolling, and then also on attendance of students. Now, that's really important because it not only impacts the instruction that those kids are able to get, but it also affects the funding of districts because we're funded on average daily attendance or weighted average daily attendance. If we look over the last year, we've got statewide quite a number of kids that at least at the beginning of the year, we were missing. Last year, we had 5,323,000 kids. This year, the first week when we started the district, we had 4,855. So, we had 467,000 kids that we weren't real sure where they were. Now, that's statewide, and again, that's important not only for their education, but it's important because that's how districts generate funds to support your programs, pay your staffs, et cetera. And I've followed, you know, Dr. Henry, I know we've had conversations, and districts in the area are watching this very closely, the impacts on your districts. These impacts were greater in districts that had higher percentages of low-income kids. So, statewide, at least that initial impact, districts that had more than 75% low-income kids, and our state average is about 60%, were down over 9%. Districts that had very few low-income kids still had some missing children, but it was really more in the 3.6% range. So, quite a bit of disparity there. You could see it impacted both charter schools, but it also impacted our traditional ISDs somewhat more. And then, as CFOs, superintendents, and I'm sure they're beginning to have these discussions with the board, when the students are missing, not only does it affect that base funding, that ADA, basic allotment, regular money, but it begins to affect a lot of the additional funds that districts depend on to support the programs that you're offering. Compensatory education, weights may be affected in funding, and by the way, that is also closely correlated with Title I funding from the federal level, bilingual ELL funding, special education, and then again, our college, career, military programs, those career tech programs. If the kids aren't there, you're not generating the weights that you need to be generating to supporting the program. So, I would probably say, right now, talking to districts all over the state, this decline in our student enrollment and in our attendance is one of the most significant issues that districts all over Texas are concerned about and struggling with because it affects budgets, it affects your ability to maintain the programs you have, and your staffing, and just meet the expectations that you have and that your community has. And Mark, I don't know what y'all's numbers are showing right now, but I think y'all are showing some decline like every, about, about three? And that's probably better than some of your neighbors, so that's good, but that's still significant. That's a lot of kids, and it's a lot of dollars. Other issues we're dealing with right now are obviously remote instruction, not only getting the devices deployed in the hands of students, but the whole issue of connectivity. I do expect that to be a major issue during the session at the state level, and frankly, I also anticipate that it's going to be an issue at the federal level. And I believe there will be some federal money that is focusing on that. We have a lot of one-time calls related to remediation efforts and things that districts are putting in place. We've already talked about technology. The attendance accounting, it's one thing to get the kids enrolled. You still have to account for their attendance and presence during the day in the various programs, and I'm just going to make a somewhat editorial comment. I think the state could have made the attendance accounting for the remote part a lot simpler. It is, it is created, in my experience talking to districts, a, in many places, a real burden on teachers and people at the campus level trying to actually account for kids that we're trying to serve, particularly in remote environments. Obviously, the stress levels, you're probably feeling it as a board, your administration and your teachers are feeling it. We're beginning to hear concerns that retirement rates at the end of this year may increase significantly, and of course, that could have a real impact on our ability to employ the staff needed. So, let's look at, that's kind of what districts are dealing with. So, the revenue issues on our side are, if the kids aren't all there, how do we generate the dollars we need to generate to meet our budget expectations, take care of our staff, keep our programs going? And the state side, you know, all would be well if the state had plenty of money to step in and help districts out. Unfortunately, obviously, the state is also struggling somewhat with its revenue projections because they are playing out a little bit differently. Fiscal year 20, just, you know, the state talks in terms of fiscal years. The state fiscal year is a September 1 to August 31 year, so it kind of lines up with what we think of as a school year. The fiscal year 2020 was the 1920 school year. So, we're really looking back. We don't have data yet on state revenue for the current biennium that just started in September, but we do have pretty good information about what happened, particularly in the latter six months of last fiscal year, and it wasn't good news. What we see is that the state's expectation, what they thought they were going to receive in revenues declined fairly significantly from about 53.2 billion to about 49.2 billion, about a $4 billion decline. And remember, that's only basically for the second half of one year. That's not even for a full year. That's really reflecting basically from April forward, and so, that was significant at the state level, and let's see where those declines were. You know, we do not have an income tax in Texas. We're not going to have an income tax. We're very dependent on use taxes and production taxes. Our main source of revenue for general revenue is sales tax. That's larger than any others, and again, you will see that sales tax was down a couple of billion just in the second half of last year, and it's continuing to run below original expectations. Obviously, motor vehicles were down, and then oil production and gas production were very dependent on our production taxes to fund our state budget, and those have declined in the second half of last year, and they're continuing to slow, show decline. So, even as districts are struggling, the state itself is also going to be short quite a number of billions of dollars to meet its revenue expectations. Now, in the middle of this, we talked about the work that has to be done before we begin the session. All agencies prepare and submit for consideration what's known as an LAR or Legislative Appropriations Request. It's kind of their starting point on what they think, whatever their area of operation is, what they, what they think they need. TEA, Texas Education Agency, submitted a couple of months back, six weeks back, its LAR for consideration. LAR for consideration. They assumed continuing property value growth because obviously, property value growth is significant in terms of supporting schools at the local level. The more dollars we raise locally, that's less of an impact on state. And I'm concerned about these estimates. As we look into 2021, I'm hopeful that we will continue to have this level of property value growth in the state, but I think we're going to have to be cautious. TEA also assumed a level of student growth. Now, remember, right now, we're not showing growth, we're actually showing a decline in students. So again, I hope that if this reflects a level of optimism, I hope it carries out. TEA did not project any cuts to the Foundation School Program. That's the basic funding program for schools, and that's appropriate. That's really not their place to go in and suggest a reduction, but that doesn't mean that we're out of danger. Those adjustments typically occur during the legislative session, and their actions by the legislature, they're really not tied to the recommendation that TEA makes at the beginning of the session. TEA actually had their hearing today on their LAR before the Legislative Budget Board, so it's now formally submitted. The Legislative Budget Board is going through this process with all of the agencies. Once they compile all of those, that will kind of be the starter place budget, if you will, when the legislature begins to work in January. And in January, the comptroller is also going to provide an initial revenue estimate. Comptroller Hager, I think in my view, has done an outstanding job, him and his team, but they're going to be looking into the future. They're not just thinking six months ahead, they're trying to look two years ahead because, remember, our appropriation cycle, we're looking into the future, and they will provide an initial revenue estimate in January that will be adjusted during the course of the year. But we don't deficit fund at the state level. At some point during the session, the dollars the comptroller's is available, and the funds to be spent through the appropriations process have to match up. Those have to balance out, and that's going to be a difficult process during the session. I think the legislature is at least going to start the process, assuming some multi-billion-dollar cuts across the board to all of the services that depend on general revenue in the state of Texas. Now, in public education, as we get into that conversation, I think some of the big policy issues is, are all the conversations about cuts just on the money that goes to schools that you actually use for salaries and programs for kids? Or is some of the cut on the money that the state has committed to property tax compression also part of that conversation? You know, where do we, where does the burden fall? There's already a conversation about local fund balances. Districts carry local fund balances, you're actually required by state law to carry at least a three-month fund balance. And I'm sure your CFO regularly talks to you about that, that is, that's in essence what carries you through the start of school year and the fall when you're not receiving state revenue and you're not receiving local tax dollars. But the state is very much looking at those local fund balances, they estimate them to be about fourteen billion collectively statewide. Some of those are unobligated funds, some of them are obligated for specific purposes, some of them may be fund balances that are actually tied to construction projects and things of that nature. I do expect that to be a big part of conversation during the session because the state does have a rainy day fund, and we're already hearing individuals at the state level saying, if we're going to spend some of our rainy day, we want to see districts spending down some of their fund balance. So I expect that to take some, quite a bit of attention. And then the last one I've listed here that I'm hopeful about, now that we have the election behind us, I do think there will be a bipartisan interest in another round of Federal CARES Act funding. And whether that occurs between now and January, or whether that occurs early in the next administration, remains to be seen, but I'm cautiously optimistic that we can look forward to some assistance at the federal level as we have in previous downturns in the economy such as 2009. Assuming that that CARES Act funding does occur, I think there will be a significant chunk of it that is support for state government and local government, and hopefully will help fill some of the budget holes that we have here in Texas. Now, some other issues that are not exactly funding, but I think will be kind of center stage, part of the conversation, one is about testing and accountability. How many people think this year, in the middle of COVID, with all of the stresses that students and teachers are dealing with, the remote instruction, et cetera, et cetera, how many people think it is a great idea to just keep giving the state standardized tests as if none of this was happening? Anybody want to vote for that? We are seeing members, both Republicans and Democrats, already stake out a position saying, you know, this is a year when we probably need to step back, maybe take a pause on some of the testing, and certainly for accountability purposes, converting whatever those test scores are, even if we give them, converting them into ratings seems like a particularly bad idea this year. So I think we will continue to get conversation about that, and I'm hoping we get some relief on that during the session. Technology, remote instruction, you know, what these last few months have shone a light on is the so-called digital divide, the very big difference, not only between different groups of students, in many cases tied to their socioeconomic status, but also between types of districts. And the rural districts, for example, just having basic connectivity is a serious issue in many parts of the state, and I think we're going to see some efforts around connectivity in state, in our legislature. And again, I think there's going to be some federal consideration about that as well. Charter schools will continue to be an issue. As you know, charter schools, and I'm talking about the open enrollment charters that are authorized at the state level, they draw more funding than a traditional public school. The exact same kid who walks out of a Cyfair ISD school walks across the street to a charter school will draw quite a bit more state funding. Mark, I don't remember your exact number.
It's fifteen hundred.
Yeah, it's as much as eighteen hundred in some cases, in your cases, it's literally fifteen hundred dollars more a kid. And for the charter school, that's one hundred percent state money because there's not a local tax base. So it's actually more expensive to the state, not only on a per-kid basis, but the state's paying a hundred percent of the cost. So I think we're going to continue to hear conversations about that. Districts around the state are very concerned about this differential in funding, and I expect that to be a big issue. And then the last thing I have on the slide is an issue that will loom over everything, and that is redistricting. We are obligated to do that every biennium, about once every, I mean, not every biennium, every dec- every decade, about once every ten years after the new census comes out, and it has real consequences for the state of Texas for the following decade. The census, trying to do the census in the middle of 2020 in our COVID environment, I think has been a struggle to begin with. Many states are showing real declines. We know that we're missing families, we're missing kids. Again, that affects Title I funding, it affects other areas. That's not a unique issue for Texas, I don't know how the feds are going to deal with it. But that data will then be used to redistrict our House of Representatives, our state senate, and all of our congressional seats. And if you don't think that there is a real interest in how those districts get drawn, come watch it sometime because there you're talking literally about political survival. We're going to get the data, I think it's going to be late during the session. I'm not going to be surprised if it's April before we get census data to begin the redistricting process, and I think there's a very real potential that that spills into a special session. The thing to watch in that is, you know, Texas historically, on both the senate and the House of Representatives and in our congressional seats, we have a number of districts that are anchored in rural Texas. And many of those districts may be anchored in rural Texas, but then put fingers into the urban areas to pick up the necessary population. And guess where the growth has been over the last decade? It's in the urban areas and the suburban areas, not only the core urban counties, but increasingly the next-tier counties around our core urban areas is where all of our growth has been. And it's going to be very difficult to continue to draw as many traditionally rural seats as we've probably had in the state of Texas, given the shifts in population. That's obviously important to those communities. It's also important, I will say, to a public education community because in my long history, whether those members are Democrats or Republicans, a lot of those communities, public education is the lifeblood of the whole town. And we've found really strong supporters over the years in many of those communities and a lot of great members. But I think simply where the population growth has occurred is going to make redistricting difficult this time, and it's going to lead to a shift in where seats are. And my last observation, and that great Irish poet and playwright, Oscar Wilde, once observed that everything is going to be fine in the end. If it isn't fine yet, it isn't the end. And I think for all of us in 2020, we know we're not at the end. We are living through some very difficult times. Frankly, this is going to be a very difficult session. I'm an optimist by nature, and I do believe that there are better days ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to working with all of the supporters of public education, both at the board level, administrative level, and all of the great supporters that we have during the session to... The potential for great gains is going to be hard this session, but what we need to avoid is doing damage to our public school communities, to our teachers, and to our programs, and I think that needs to be our objective as we go into the session. So I'll stop there. Any questions, any observations?
Thank you, David. Tom, you want to kick it off?
I know earlier, state agencies were requested to prepare a pro forma presentation assuming a five percent reduction. Do we have any curbside ideas as to what percentage reduction at first blush we might be looking at on a public ed basis?
And that's a great question, thank you. Agencies were instructed back in the summer as the state began to get a sense that this was not a short-term disaster, but it was going to continue, and they were told to prepare reductions of their budget by five percent. But one of the specific things that was exempted from that cut was the Foundation School Program. So if people are thinking about cuts, they haven't shown their cards yet, I'll say that. The agency did not prepare a proposed reduction in the Foundation School Program. Again, I think they view that as a political conversation that will take place. You know, the highway department and the public education community are two of the things in the state government that literally touch every town in Texas, and I think they will leave that to the legislature. I think our big struggle is if we do get into a conversation around cuts, and first of all, our position needs to be, you know, the improvements you made in 2019, don't turn around and undo everything you just did. Use the rainy day fund, use federal funds, let's get through this difficult time with an expectation that our economy will recover. But if there are cuts, the conversation's going to be, where do you make them? And I will give you a couple of the big issues that this is where the argument's going to be. If you go back and look at House Bill Three, a big part of the funding was an increase in the basic allotment that helps every district in Texas, it's the foundation on which every other formula and program rests. And then you had all of these new bright ideas, like the teacher incentive program or the CCMR bonus program, that might turn out to have benefit down the line, but at present, they are unproven. We simply don't have enough experience with it. So do you, if you're going to make cuts, do you put a pause on some of those programs that are new and not yet proven? Or do you cut the basic allotment that all districts depend on? And I'm going to tell you, people in Austin have different opinions about which ones they're more in love with. And then another policy debate is if there are cuts, do you take all of the money out of actual programmatic funds that support kids and schools? Or does some of the money that the state is spending simply to buy down property tax rates also get to be part of the conversation? So, Tom, that's a political conversation, but nobody has showed their cards on that yet.
Well, it's certainly nothing you would talk about if you're up for election in November, right?
Right. You're exactly right.
Looking at it from a slightly different perspective, what is the approximate percentage reduction in revenues that the comptroller's office is floating out there?
You know, there's been a lot of informal guesstimates, and that's all they are, is informal until the, you know, it's not real till the comptroller puts a stake down. But, you know, people, I've heard people say, well, we're going to be dealing with a fifteen-billion-dollar shortfall during the session, and they're getting those numbers by taking the shortfall that we had for the last six months of 2020 and simply projecting it forward. You know, if you said it's going to be the exact same reduction carried forward, that's how you can generate some guesses. But one thing I will say is because we are highly dependent on use taxes, like sales tax, those are pretty elastic. They move, they respond to circumstances quickly. You know, when sales activity began to drop, we immediately saw the impact on state revenue, literally within a month. The good news is, think about this, during spring of twenty-one, we're actually looking forward all the way through twenty-two to August thirty-first of twenty-three. If we think the economy is going to get better in twenty-two and twenty-three, let's say we think there's going to be a vaccine, we think there are going to be mitigation treatments that allow many, many activities to resume a more normal operation, then you might see a more optimistic projection trying to look out, you know, if somebody asks you and says, what's your revenue going to be two years from now? I can say what I hope it's going to be, but, you know, it's an educated guess is literally the best. So I'm hopeful during the session that the, my belief is the comptroller will start with a pretty conservative number that reflects experience as it's currently occurring. They do update that number throughout the session as they get monthly sales tax information, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm hopeful that during the session, the estimates will actually improve as we move forward. But that's all it is at this point, is a hope. But if you simply took... But if you simply took the last six months of the last fiscal year and said, I'm going to project that forward and not assume any improvement, we're probably starting with a $15 billion cut, give or take a couple of billion.
The $15 billion is approximately what percentage of the total state budget?
Well, it depends on if you're looking at kind of general revenue funds that are the ones that are kind of... The ones that the state has the most control over appropriation, or if you're looking at their all-funds number. And the all-funds number includes fees that professionals pay. It includes various types of licensing or transactional fees. It includes federal funds. It includes dedicated funds, you know, funds that really aren't available to be moved from one program to another because they're obligated. The $15 billion, if you only look at it as a percentage of general revenue, you know, would probably be somewhere in the 10% range.
Yeah, and that's what I was hearing as well, was about 10%.
Yeah. I mean, and again, these are broad guesses at this point, but it's not insignificant.
So what is your best argument why we should tap the rainy day fund?
Because it's raining.
Right.
The whole point of the rainy day fund, the reason it was created, was to level out the ups and downs in the economy over time. It was... We build it up in good times, and it's meant to be used in difficult times so that we're not constantly creating and dismantling programs.
And the point you made previously, that two years out, everybody assumes the economy will bounce back, bounce back quickly...
We hope, yeah.
After a vaccine has been proven and is distributed.
Yep.
And that, to me, ties into the argument why we should tap into the rainy day fund.
Right.
It's a balancing mechanism.
And it's a one-time expenditure. You know, you're hoping that things recover so that you don't have to show up again, and that at some point, the economy allows us to replenish it. That's the way it's designed to work.
Good point. Thank you, David.
Ms. Blackshear.
I know you mentioned about testing earlier, and, you know, our thoughts go to STAR. And I know I've already been talking to my state representative about that very issue and how I feel that STAR testing needs to be suspended in the spring. What is just your feeling of the possibility of that occurring?
You know, and this is an educated guess on my part. And think about last spring. I think the likelihood is that the testing gets suspended completely. We don't even try to do it.
Good.
Or the other option is that we do the testing to the extent we can, but it is only for diagnostic purposes, and it is not converted into ratings and used as a stick to whack schools with.
Right.
And so I think that will be the debate. I think the idea that we're going to do testing as, quote, "normal" and that we're going to use it for ratings purposes is...
Totally unfair.
Out of all the options, that's a really bad... That's a really bad option. I think the debate's going to be between those two.
Good, good. And we talked about the Federal CARES Act.
Yep.
Okay. Well, if a bill is passed, would that money for, say, school districts be funneled through the state?
What will happen, by expectation, and again, this is simply based on previous experience, is that when the money gets to the state level, the state doesn't have to actually pass those dollars through. They're allowed to use those dollars to fill holes in the state budget so that they don't have to make cuts in the state budget. So in other words, you don't get additional dollars, but you don't get cuts.
Okay.
They, in essence, use the federal money to avoid cuts in the public education environment.
And we just have to trust them to use it appropriately?
Well, and, you know, and I mean, if you go back historically, that's exactly what happened in 2009. I mean, the economy turned down in 2009. We did not have cuts in 2009 because the federal ARRA money was used to plug budget holes with the hope that things would recover by 2011. Well, when we got to 2011, the economy had not yet recovered, and that was when the, you know, the hammer fell, and we wound up with a $5.4 billion cut in funding to public education. So if you use those funds to kind of fill the hole this time, you really are betting that the economy's going to recover before we're back here next time, because, you know, once you use all your options, the last option really is cuts. And that's what happened in '09 and '11, and that's definitely... We don't want to see that again.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Ogletry.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Now, the composition of the legislature you pointed out to us is the same as...
Exactly the same, yep.
And this is the legislative group that passed House Bill 3?
It is, yep.
So...
Well, I want to... With one caveat, there are some places where the seat is still the same party, but it's a different person.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, the individual retired, but the person who won the seat is of the same party. So most of the people are the same people, but there will be some new people just with the same party affiliation.
So... But the House Bill 3 was a great plus.
Correct.
And I'm wondering, and I wanted to see what you thought, that this same composition would not now reverse this, what they have given. Do you think it would be... They would be more inclined to go into the rainy day fund rather than say...
I do think cuts are going to be the last option for the body that passed this. And remember, they passed it overwhelmingly bipartisan. I think in the entire House, there was one dissenting vote, and there were no dissenting votes at all on the Senate side. So I think simply reversing what they did, they're going to be reluctant to do that. I think looking at the rainy day fund, looking at hopefully some federal funds, and then again, the one I want to make sure we've got our eyes open, is looking at local fund balances and saying, what can you all do? And so don't forget... But I do think cuts are not... You know, that's going to be... That's not going to be where they start. That's going to be kind of a last option, I do believe.
Thank you.
Ms. Heineman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. It's always a joy to hear from you and to always learn from you. I think it was interesting to hear you say that our objective for this legislative session is to avoid doing damage.
First, do no harm.
To students and teachers and school districts.
Yep.
That really frames how we're going to be approaching this legislative session, and we're going to be talking about our priorities later tonight.
Yep.
So I think it's important to put it in that context. I had made a note, and you just talked about the last downturn in the economy was in 2008. We saw the cuts 2011. So I made a note that we're going to be looking to avoid doing damage, not just in the 2021-2023 biennium, but the next one as well.
Right.
So we need to have that long-range focus.
Right. We deal with the urgent, but we also have to take that longer view.
Right. And that's our role as local elected officials. I am concerned about the state legislature dictating how we use our local fund balances, and that's an issue of local control.
Yep.
So I feel like that needs to continue to be something that we focus on. So do no damage to students, teachers, and school districts from a financial security standpoint.
100% agree.
Okay.
And obviously, districts are in very different... The number I gave you is simply an aggregate number, but districts are in very different positions with regard to your own fund balances, how much may already be obligated funds for various purposes. So that's going to be a real deep dive, hard conversation we're going to have to have repeatedly with our state leadership.
How would best... Why would you suggest is our best way to engage with our elected officials to have an impact and to defend our local public schools?
Start early. And, you know, we talked about this, it's going to be unusual in many regards. You know, I started working with education issues at the Capitol where you literally walked in the door of the Capitol. There were no guards. There was nothing. You could walk into any office in the Capitol, whether it was the Speaker or the Lieutenant Governor, and just say, hi, how are you doing? I'd like to talk to so-and-so. It's gotten more structured over the years. We now have metal detectors and security at all of the entrances, and it's going to be even more secure this time. I mean, the general public is going to have real difficulty getting into the Capitol. They're already talking about doing a lot of the committees virtually, having people testify virtually. And so I would say what that means is have a lot of conversations with your folks now, before the session starts. You know, once you're in the flow of that very intense 140-day period, it gets more difficult. And it's going to be even more difficult this session to simply have access to your members. So I would say, again, the past is prologue. We know who our members are. Those conversations ought to be starting immediately.
Thank you.
David, thank you so much. Just kind of one comment from me, and that was yesterday, TASB had their monthly meeting with the Commissioner of Education. He was pushing all the good things TEA is trying to do for COVID for the districts, but what kept coming up were the charter schools that he had presented to the State Board of Education.
Yep.
And I believe that there were eight charter branches that he had proposed to them, or TEA had proposed, and only five were accepted by the State Board of Education. So we kept bringing up the subject. In fact, I've known Mike for a while now, as Tom Jackson, but I kept asking him. I said, I want to know, is this your idea? Are you following the law that your boss, who is the governor, is telling you to do? Is that... Is this where this is coming from, or is this something that you want to push? He wouldn't directly answer that, except to say, I've got to follow the law. That's what he was saying. But I don't think there is a law that says we have to have charters, is there?
There is a law that allows, Chapter 12 and 12A of the Education Code, allow groups or entities or people to submit applications. There is no requirement that any of them be approved.
Okay. All right. And that's kind of where I was going with that. But it's amazing to me, in a time whenever we have cuts that we know are coming, that we know that we're not producing like we are used to in the state of Texas, that they would be willing to pay more money to an entity that is actually housed out of California or New York or Florida that are coming into Texas, and they're going to be taking money from our students and taking them back to their states. Certainly, I believe in the United States of America, but I'm going to say I believe in Texas first. So I don't want those monies going anywhere else. And I think that's one of the things we, as school board members, need to be very much aware of, that we are fighting an entity that is going to take money away from our students, so...
And I agree. You know, we can have a whole separate conversation about the merits and relative performance, but just in this environment, on pure dollars, why in the world would you spend $1,500 a kid of 100% state money when you can provide a great education for that same kid in a public environment, in a public school, for half that or even less in terms of cost to the state?
Right.
Because you're using your own local resources to cover part of the cost. That's... I think if the state's struggling with money, why are they paying more money to get something that they could be getting great educational opportunities at a reduced cost through our traditional public schools?
Thank you. I just wanted people to hear that. David, we appreciate you being here.
Always honored to be with you.
Well, and let me also say, for those that are listening and sitting in the audience, that David chose us over his lovely wife, whose birthday is tonight, today. So he may need a place to stay. I'm just seeing if anybody's got an extra room. But David just kind of smoothed the way, got a little something for her.
Well, I'll make up for it over the weekend, but Tamara was very understanding. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. She's going to make me come to your meetings every year on her birthday.
There you go. Take that and give it to her.
Oh, my gosh. She is... I mean, I'm curious. That is so kind of you. Thank you. And good to be with you tonight. So I wish you well. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, but we also have some great days ahead of us. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you, David. Safe travels. We're going to move forward to 10A on the non-consent action items. The board will consider approving the district's 2020 comprehensive annual financial report and single audit report and accept the auditor's report on the district's general purpose, financial statements, and single audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. Presenters are Karen Smith, Debbie Kirkham Young. Got it cleaned up there, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President Covey and the board members. The Texas Education Code requires that we have an annual financial audit, and we are also required by the Single Audit Act to have a compliance audit associated with our federal funds. Let's see. I'm looking for, excuse me, the remote to...
It's behind you.
Oh, right there. Go there. Oh. Sorry. There we go. I just wanted to get on it. But the district prepares the entire comprehensive annual financial report. So first, what I wanted to do is recognize Amanda Brownson over here, and then Mabel Isles within the Finance Department, because they... I said Brownson. I said by accident. Gosh, Amanda Bowles. I just got a text message from her. So anyway, they work very hard to prepare this annual financial report, and there's a lot of work involved in it throughout the entire year. And we always have been receiving the award through the Government Finance Officers Association as well as the Association of School Business Officials when we apply for the Certificate of Excellence. So there's a lot of work involved in that aspect of it. So I also would like to recognize Communications, because they prepared the cover that you see here for the comprehensive annual financial report. And then, of course, Debbie Kirkham will be here to talk about the audit report, and also Greg Peterson with Weaver and Tedwell are here. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. So here in front of you is the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance for the General Fund. The General Fund is the district's main operating fund. So if you look on B2 of the comprehensive annual financial report on page 32, you will see the detail of this, as well as the Debt Service Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, and our special revenue funds. As you can see, as of June 30, 2020, the district had revenues of $964.2 million and expenditures of $965.5 million, which resulted in a decrease in fund balance of $832,613. You may recall, last month, when I presented the information to you regarding the COVID-19 expenditures and how they had affected the district, one of the things that I mentioned to you was the funding, the ESSER funding that we would get, or the CARES funding that we would get. David Thompson alluded to this, that the funding was utilized to basically supplant state aid. And we received a little, about $17.4 million. And out of that money, we took about 2.8 and utilized it in 2019, 2020. So basically, what happened is that revenue came out of our state aid, and we have to submit expenditures to get reimbursed that revenue to make us whole. And so we only submit... And so we only submitted 2.8 million in 1920 because we knew we were going to come very close to breaking even in fund balance if we waited and drew down the rest of the money in 202021, which is when most of our expenditures will be occurring, but also to try to help offset some of the expenditures that we were going to incur in 202021. So I just wanted to remind you about that. Some of the highlights associated with the General Fund is that we were able to have a fairly stable fund balance despite COVID-19 pandemic. And, uh, I, I mentioned to you already about the 14.8 million in reimbursement from the ESAR funds. But we still have a fund balance of 6.44 months in expenditures. Also, we maintained, uh, the ratio of 1.8% of general administration to total expenditures. And the state average is about 3%. Also, the administrative cost ratio for the district, I reported on that with the first report last month. It was 3.77. You will see here that the percentage dropped to 3.67%. Now I'll turn it over to Debbie Kirkham so that she can go over the auditor's opinion on the comprehensive annual financial report and discuss the single audit report.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, if you can see the screen, on page nine of your federal single audit report is the Schedule of Findings in Question Cost. And on that particular schedule, it's one of the most important schedules that to me is in the audit, is because the, uh, state gets a lot of data by PMS. They get an ASCII data feed of your CAFER data of certain exhibits. And with all of that, the state wants to know how they can rely on all of that data. So first of all, it's the district's responsibility to prepare and present the financials and statements. And of course, with generally accepted accounting principles. But it's the auditor's responsibility to conduct it within generally accepted auditing standards that are, um, and also government auditing standards that are issued by the, um, U.S. Comptroller General of the United States. And the auditor is to determine whether, what type of opinion is going to be issued on those financial statements. And so what the state looks at is they like to see an unmodified opinion. And again, this year, the district received an unmodified opinion that's referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you can receive that all the assets, liabilities and revenues and expenditures are fairly presented in accordance with all the standards that are issued by generally accepted accounting principles. The next thing that is required on that, uh, that's in that summary of Schedule of Findings in Question Cost is because the district receives more than $750,000 in federal funds, they're also required to have a federal single audit. And, uh, that particular, uh, program that we audited this year, the major program was the Child Nutrition Cluster. And, uh, they also received an unmodified clean opinion. And I want to just say congratulations to those, uh, staff members in the Child Nutrition because I know it was an unusual year with COVID. The control processes had to change a little bit. And so we had a lot of questions and, and asking for how those processes and because those control processes were changing. And so we appreciate all of their work. And special thanks to Karen and Amanda too, before we open up for questions, and Mabel, and also internal audit. We ask a lot of questions and this year auditing was a little bit different. It's always been great is that we've been able to, the district has been able to upload a lot of information for us. And, uh, and we're able to be onsite and ask some questions. And I think that it worked really well, even though it wasn't a COVID environment. They were able to upload information just like they always were. We were operating remote, but we were able to have Zoom meetings and share our screens and, and upload additional data and just kudos to, uh, all of those individuals. Uh, we appreciate their hard work during an unusual time of audit.
Now we're open to any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hanneman, would you like to kick it off?
I don't have any questions. I'm.
No questions. I saw your writing. I thought you were making notes.
No, I, I was making notes, but I'm good. Thank you.
Dr. O, you're okay? Ms. Blacksher? Mr. Jackson, do we have a question?
Only one.
Okay.
Well, actually, you know, that's a lie, but. It's a really long question. Uh, first, let me say thank you for being here. Uh, I always appreciate the presentation of the audit. I recommend to the viewing audience, if you don't want to eat numbers, uh, for dinner, at least take the time to read the management's discussion and analysis of earnings. Uh, it encapsulates, uh, very succinctly what went on from a financial perspective for the district. Uh, and it's very meaningful information. There's always a couple of areas that I like to talk about, particularly for our viewing audience. The area where there is the most amount of wiggle will come in estimates and accruals. So what would y'all deem to be the most significant estimates or the most significant accrual?
Um, the, the most significant accruals, I, I'll break it down between the government-wide financial statements and the governmental fund financial statements. The government-wide are the first two, part of the, the basic financial statements. And it is pension accrual, uh, the OPEB accrual, as well as accrued interest, I would say are the three largest ones. Uh, then it, associated with the governmental funds, it's going to be revenue, uh, the state aid, uh, accrual for state aid. Then on the expenditure side, we have a payroll accrual that we do, as well as we would be, um, looking at accrual for construction that we do too.
So if we pick, uh, a couple of those to chatter about, probably the largest number is the pension accrual. Uh, I'd like for you to touch on, uh, the discount rate that's being used. Why is that significant? Uh, the inflation rate that, that is being used. But also for the key estimates involved, do we generate those? Are those generated by another entity outside of us and we merely take our pro-rata share? Uh, and then I'll have a follow-up question, but, but first let's, let's go ahead and sketch out the, the framework.
Well, if, if, first of all, if you look at the pension accrual, which is the TRS Pension Plan, if you go to, um, I would, I would direct you maybe to page, uh, 62. Uh, the, the discount rate is 7.25%. And that is actuarially determined. It is not determined by the district. It is actuarially determined. And then, um, there's also a sensitivity analysis that, that is also done associated with that. And they look at, if you look at page 64, you'll see the current discount rate of 7.25%. But then they also look at what would happen if that rate was 1% lower or 1% higher. And it is really, it's the volatility of investments is what that relates to, is the measure of volatility of the investments. What I would say associated with this is this is the governmental fund, I mean, the government-wide financial statements that is impacted by this accrual. And so what it takes into consideration is as if all of those expended, all that liability was due now. And, which it is not. Therefore, the, it's not showing up in that manner in the governmental fund financial statements. What's in the governmental fund financial statements is the district's annual contribution.
If we take a look at our net position, four years ago, we were positive. And now we are negative in a very significant fashion. So I have two questions, uh, one for Ms. Kirkham. You had to give us a non-modified opinion, looking at this net position, which is negative and a very big number. Why did that not impact the opinion that your firm gave to our financial statements?
Uh, that was due to the district has the ability, they're on a modified accrual basis. And they're able to meet their continuing, uh, obligations. As Karen indicated, those funds were not required to be paid. The district is paying everything that is legislatively required in contributions for their pension and their OPEB plan. Uh, but because those particular plans aren't 100% funded, similar to social security, there's a big liability there. And so when the Gatsby said, let's be more transparent because there were a lot of plans out there that, um, weren't presenting all of that liability. They said, let's start reporting that on the government-wide. So when you look at the fund balance of the General Fund and the Debt Service Fund, and then of course, all your special revenue funds are reimbursement grants, so they're primarily a zero. The district has adequate funds to, uh, continue operations beyond, beyond one year. And that's the measure for a, uh, modified opinion.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Karen, back to you. So first, remind us how we went from a fairly healthy, positive balance to this incredibly large negative balance number. And then would, would you concur with Ms. Kirkham that perhaps a better analysis is our actual fund balance itself in terms of operating, uh, funds?
Yes, and Mr. Jackson, um, the, the two main reasons is that liability for the TRS pension as well as the OPEB liability that we had to record. I agree with her and I would say in addition to that, one of the things that we're required to do that Texas Education Agency looks at, as well as when we do our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, they actually remove those liabilities because they realize, uh, that those liabilities are making a difference in the calculation when in fact, the district has the funds to meet their ongoing obligations.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kirkham, within your report, you note that you looked at compliance on internal controls, uh, but that you render no opinion on the efficacy of the internal controls. So I'm a little confused if you would look at them, and obviously you rely upon those tests. But then you tell us that you, you render no opinion on the efficacy of those controls. How does that provide you sufficient assurance to render your opinion?
An auditor's, uh, responsibility is not to, um, evaluate the internal controls to issue an opinion on the operating effectiveness of those internal controls. The purpose is to determine what the internal controls are so that we can perform our risk assessment to determine in the financial statements where the risk is and where we need to perform our audit procedures to those most significant areas that you mentioned earlier in estimates, foundation revenue. We know that that is a significant estimate. And so therefore, we want to know what risk, what procedures are being performed. What are your control activities around that? And, you know, at Cyfair, uh, several different things are done in the templates. And then it's form, uh, formalized up with the state's projection of what that near final estimate's going to be. So we utilize the understanding of the control processes so that we can determine where our audit risks are and where we need to perform more tests. And where we generally perform the most task in a school district is you're going to see payroll is one of the most significant areas. Payables is the next area and foundation revenue. Of course, when we start looking at pension and OPEB, although those are big liabilities, even though they're significant estimates, those are provided by actuaries. It's audited by the State Auditor's Office. So really, it's just bringing those pension and OPEB numbers, even though they're huge and we don't like them. It's just really bringing those into the report and that's really what management does there. So, um, an audit, a financial statement audit is not supposed to be an internal control audit. It's to, uh, you utilize evaluating those internal controls to determine where your risks are in the financial statement audit and where you need to perform, where you need to put your attention to as an auditor.
So if I wanted to simplify that down to one sentence, your audit was not conducted to identify any fraud?
No. Uh, we, we have to, uh, have a, have an understanding of the control processes and we have to, uh, do inquiries of fraud and have, and, 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 and to determine that the audit process is, is to under, have an understanding of, of what fraud could occur when we're evaluating the control processes. But we're not doing a fraud audit. But we are supposed to, to perform our audit procedures in consideration of fraud. And, and with that, in that fraud consideration, there's a lot of inquiries with, uh, staff and management and also board members to get feedback of where there's, uh, particular concerns, uh, reading the minutes and any legal instances that have occurred in the district. We're looking at all of that to see if there is any fraud occurred. So if there's any additional areas where we need to spend a substantive amount of time in our audit process.
That's an excellent answer. That's actually better than any answer I had ever been given. That's, that's a fairly standard question that always gets asked whenever you present a, an audit report. So, so well done. I would direct the viewing audience, uh, to take a look at Table 16 if they have time. This district has done an admirable job over the last 10 years. If you take a look at the, and Table 16 is salary comparisons. If you take a look at where this district was 10 years ago, comparing salaries both to the state, but also to the county in terms of averages and also starting salaries. Members of this board, and I wasn't on it 10 years ago, but several members were. And then other members came and they made a commitment to change that for the teachers and staff of the school district. And Table 16 does in fact say that it was accomplished. And I'd like to make the point, the state legislature honored this district a number of years ago. But what they found to be most commendable is that while salaries were being increased, so were the savings in the fund balance, a complete anomaly for large districts around the state. So Table 16 is really, uh, kudos to senior management, uh, operating, but also financial. So well done in that regard. A while back, the management requested, and, and we as a board approved it, that contracts above a certain dollar amount, uh, would no longer require board approval. Uh, and that was done for efficiency purposes. One of those contracts though, that, that happened to fall under that dollar amount level, happened to be the auditor's contract. Uh, so, so that meant that, that we didn't get to grill y'all as, as we have, have in the past. So a couple of questions in that area because that is a board responsibility. How long have you been an auditor, uh, for the district? Not you personally, but, uh, the firm that you represent.
I, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking because they were auditing the district before I came to the district. But I believe it's been about 13 years, I think.
And a part of that was at our predecessor firm. And then when we merged with Weaver and Tedwell, then, uh, they continued.
And that, that merger occurred approximately when?
2016.
And if memory serves me right, uh, we submitted a request for, uh, qualifications. Uh, Karen, was that about four years ago?
Um, we actually did it. It was, uh, it was right before last year. I think it was early 2019, Mr. Jackson. And, um, we brought that to the board for approval.
So even though some of, some of the partners and staff have been here for that long of time period, the actual firm that you're with have been our auditors in 2016. I would make the note, it's fairly interesting that a study has been made about the change of auditors. There used to be a very strongly held belief, uh, in academia, but also in the public, that a change of auditors every five or six years, uh, was the best, for the entity being audited. And in fact, the superintendent and I had a conversation about this probably six years ago, uh, in, in front of the camera. But academia has done a study to find that that is not the case. There are safeguards that auditors must take to. the case. There are safeguards that auditors must take to avoid excess familiarity. Almost said that right, not quite. But beyond that, generally, there is not an increased risk with ongoing engagement with an auditor, which interestingly enough was the point the superintendent was making before when we had our open discussion about it. That covers the points that I wanted to make, but also the questions. There is one other one. You do a single audit, and as Stuart Snow reminded me nine years ago, not a special audit, it's a single audit. And you said it was on child nutrition. So if you would, remind us what child nutrition is. You aren't going out looking at kids eating meals, right?
No, sir. We do look at some things to say that they're meeting the meal requirements. But as far as pretty much what we're looking at is a national school breakfast and lunch program. And in that, this year, you had the breakfast, and then beginning in March, that was the COVID-19, so it was identified separately on the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and also the National School Lunch Program. So both of those are broken out between regular and COVID. And in doing that, the auditor is going to look at that particular program, and it's a little bit different in the risk assessment because the controls are different and the compliance requirements are different. So one of the key things that we look at in those programs are eligibility and reporting and cash management and special provisions. There's also allowable costs and allowable expenditures. So there's like 12 or 14 compliance requirements, and you're determining which of one of those are the greatest risk. And generally, you're going to be spending time on eligibility testing. You're going to do that control narrative again to understand what the control processes are. And that's what I mentioned this year, the control process has changed a little bit in April. And so before, our walkthroughs may have been a little bit simpler, but this year was a little bit changed on the walkthroughs and seeing how they were accumulating the data of providing those lunches and those breakfasts to the students or to the people that are driving through, and what the state's requirements were for that particular grant. So those are the type of things that we were doing with child nutrition this year.
Well, and that was very important, particularly this year, given COVID, that that would be the single audit. And y'all rotate that, correct?
Yes, sir. As we mentioned, you're looking at the large programs and the large programs that meet that type of criteria have to be audited every third year, unless there's some unusual risk in a particular year where it's been identified.
And then one last question that only financial people would ever ask. Why did, and it's really to both of y'all, why did you choose not to have a subsequent event as to the impact of COVID, even though you mentioned that in the front part, you chose not to have a footnote? I seem to recall, we spent almost $60 million, and that seems to me that that's probably material in terms of any revenue comparisons or expense comparisons.
Basically, what it's related to is there's, it had already started in 2019, 2020, and really, a subsequent event is something that happens within a certain period of time after the audit's done and the report is submitted. So those are the type of items that you have to disclose. Is it 60 days, Debbie?
Well, just something that occurs after fiscal year end. So you're trying to evaluate whether that COVID is going to have some significant effect that's subsequent to year end that you're not already aware of, and it's already included in your budget and has been prepared for. So there's mixed opinions. Some people feel like there's a continuing uncertainty. There are some districts who feel like we know what the issues are that are going to be affected. We've planned and we've budgeted for them. So we don't think there's any subsequent event that's going to have a financial impact that we haven't already considered in our planning and our budgets that have gone to our board. So you are going to see some mixed opinions around school districts as they prepare their financial statements, whether they think there's still an uncertainty or whether they feel like they're prepared for it.
But this information, Mr. Jackson, is also discussed in some of the explanations, whether it be in the M D N A or the notes to the financial statements. In certain areas where we explain the differences between the budget and actual, so that information is discussed within the comprehensive annual financial report.
And once again, a tip of the hat to both of y'all. A very difficult job, particularly in this day and time with what's going on, but a thoroughly professional job, and that's the highest accolade that I can give for somebody in my profession. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I had a number of highly intellectual questions for both of you ladies, but Tom asks each and every one of them.
[laughter]
Board, I'm asking you if the non-consent, if you want to keep that on non-consent or move to consent. Non-consent, we'll stand that alone. You want to move it to consent? All right, we're moving it to consent. It's all right. Do we need a break? Anybody? Are we okay? Anybody my age need a break? Nope? Okay. Moving on. 7A, the board will hold a public hearing to consider authorizing an amendment to the employee compensation plan to include a lead safely retention stipend. Dr. Henry and Karen Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, trustees, and also Harry Wright will be presenting this with us also today. Correct, Harry?
[laughter]
Just to give the board a quick rundown, and although we're talking about a lead safely retention stipend, I just wanted to reemphasize some of the things that we've already done to help this most difficult year move forward as positive as possible. You know, there's not anything that we can do, you can do, anyone can do to make this year perfect, but we are trying to come up with ways and work with our campuses, campus leadership teams and our staff to make sure that we can make this year a successful year for our students. So just a quick reminder, we added the teacher planning and prep time days about a month ago. We actually had our first day on November 3, and I can tell you, and you may have received very many nice comments, but I did also in our teachers, asked me to make sure the board knew how much they appreciated that day. And we've got a day every month to kind of help our teachers and staff catch up, and that's November 3, which I talked about, December 11, January 15, February 12, March 12, April 12, and May 17. Of course, just as a reminder, to comply with T E A attendance requirements, parents and students in grades pre K through 12 may request on-campus instruction those days on the designated remote learning days. And to cover those students that do choose to come to school, we have instructional aides, club rewinds, and other instructional professionals that help oversee those students. Also, in terms of curriculum and instruction, a lot of concerns were expressed about much of the gaps that were created last year by missing roughly the last three months of school. So we've allowed our campuses much more leeway when it comes to scope and sequence to help meet the students' needs on their individual campuses, to help identify and address those learning gaps. We've also asked our district curriculum coaches and helping teachers to continue to support our teachers by providing lessons for teachers in schoolages. So we want to be there for our teachers to provide as much assistance as possible. And the district assessment calendar will be modified to allow for changes in the scope and sequence. Just to kind of summarize that, we're going to have fewer district benchmarks. We want to try to focus more attention on first-time instruction, less time on testing. That does not mean we're not going to have benchmarks, because we need to know where we are, but we are going to have fewer of those, and we're giving our campuses much more leeway on how they address those benchmarks. As far as teacher appraisal, later on in the agenda, we're going to be asking you to allow us to have a one-year waiver for identified provisions, including the district's appraisal system, C F tests. And the purpose of this is to reduce the time administrators must spend on comprehensive evaluations of our teachers and relieve classroom teachers of that stress. Again, and I think it's Roy and Glenda will be presenting to you a little bit later. They'll give you more details about that plan. District meetings and trainings, one of the things that we're trying to do is protect campus staff time. So unless it is legally required, we are not having meetings. There's a lot of things that we do that we think are necessary. But then again, in this most unusual year, we want to make sure that our campus staff has as much time and our leadership, campus leadership teams have as much time as possible to make sure we're focusing on our students, whether they be in person or remote. We've also allowed principals to hire additional long-term subs to accommodate individual campus needs. Again, we're trying to help relieve the stress that our teachers are experiencing this year by making sure that we have individuals to help fill in where they are needed. We've also added 10 additional contract nurses and clinic assistants, again, to help with the higher workload related to COVID-19. As you all know, on this board, at our different campuses, there are different levels in having the ability to raise funds to help do morale improving things for teachers. So I've asked Karen to make sure that all of our campuses, no matter what their financial capabilities are, that they have money available to make sure that we're doing things for teachers and staff to make sure that they are feeling appreciated and help the morale as much as possible. And then finally, what this is all about, what this public hearing is about, is we would like for you to consider approving a $500 stipend for each employee. The stipend would be a recognition for all the additional effort and hard work our employees have performed to make this school year possible. Now, I understand it's not enough, but it is an effort to say thank you from, I think, the administration and the board of this district that we know that you've gone above and beyond, and we think it's at least, along with all the other things that I mentioned, a small way that we can say thank you for all of the additional difficult work that you've done. You know, when I came to Cyfair I S D, one of the things that I had to get used to was you can have a relatively small financial number, but when you multiply it by over 16,000 employees, it becomes a really big number. So $500 may not sound like a lot to anyone, but again, when you're talking about 16,000 employees, you can do the math and see it is a significant number. But again, it's just, along with the other things that we're doing, we want to make sure that our teachers and our staff know that we appreciate them. We know this is an unprecedented year, and we just want to do everything we can to help our teachers and staff know that they are appreciated and to try to make their workload a little easier. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen, and she'll give you the details of it.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. What we are proposing, as Dr. Henry said, is an amendment to the 2020-21 staff compensation plan for this one-time stipend for all employees. And it'll be paid to employees hired by 10/31/20 and is still employed on 11/30/20. And then the definition of the full-time, part-time employees, as Dr. Henry kind of alluded to, is that we had hired these, what we called additional instructional support substitutes that are on the campus that have committed to be there all year, and we believed that these individuals should also be included in the stipend. And the stipend amount that Dr. Henry indicated is that the full-time employees will be getting $500, and a part-time employee will be getting 250. The plan is to pay this stipend in December, along with the 12/15 paycheck. And then also, the same funding source that, one of the things we're required to disclose in a public hearing of this nature is we have to say the funding source of that stipend, and it will be coming from the same funding source that employee was normally paid out of. Therefore, if they were paid out of a grant, it would be coming out of a grant. And the estimated cost to the district in total for all those employees is approximately 8.3 million, because, you know, it's a moving target, depending on what's happening. Then we are also, we recognize that we're doing it because there's enhanced procedures that were required as part of the lead safely plan, but also in addition, it's to recognize the employees, how hard they're working, look at them, recognize that there's for morale, that this is important, and what has been required of them. And we are proposing the retention stipend to address not only morale, but also retention. And I'll turn it over to Harry, where he's going to quickly discuss the public purpose associated with this stipend.
Yes, the last piece of this presentation we'd like to discuss is that this particular stipend serves a public purpose in that it's going to assist the district in retaining staff for the remainder of the school year, and this would include additional instructional support staff. It also serves a public purpose in the sense that it's going to improve staff morale, which will, of course, improve our retention in subsequent school years. And we believe that both of these goals serve a public purpose for the district, and will help us meet our legal requirements for amending a staff compensation plan as required under both board policy in Texas and the Texas Local Government Code.
Now, we're open to any questions that you may have.
Ms. Haneman?
I absolutely am supportive of whatever we can do to show our teachers and staff how much we appreciate all of their work and that we recognize how hard this school year has been. That's my only comment right now.
All right. Dr. Old.
This is an unprecedented year, and with all the things that we are going through as a district and all the things that our employees have had to adjust and go through. So it also calls for unprecedented gestures of appreciation. So I am in favor of this.
Thanks, Dr. Old. Ms. Blacksher?
Being hung up here. I'm in total agreement with this. You know, since this school year began and we saw all the challenges that it was presenting to our staff, to our teachers, to our nurses, and the many other employees of our district, including people within this building, I, you know, I look back how hard technology has worked at getting laptops out and our food nutrition department, how they have worked hard all, you know, since this pandemic began, feeding our students and our families. And, you know, I love that we're able to do something. I will tell you, I wish that we could do more. And I talked with Dr. Henry and even asked a question, can we possibly do a little bit more? But when I heard 8.3 million just for this, I realized quickly that that was what we could afford to do, and I hope that our staff will recognize that it is an appreciation and a good faith effort on our part to recognize all their hard work and challenges of this school year and to know that we totally support them. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
I too am supportive of the concept. We do need to ask the question, can we afford this? You've already told us that we have 6.44 as of the end of the fiscal year of operating funds, 6.44 months of operating funds. How does roughly $9 million impact our fund balance, knowing that David Thompson was here and said, we may have up to a 10% reduction that we'll be looking at?
Well, Mr. Jackson, you know, it's funny, I anticipated this question, and that-
Well, Mr. Jackson, you know, it's funny, I anticipated this question, and that's one of the things I looked at, and is that I feel that kind of indirectly covers it. I think I already mentioned to you how we purposely pushed some of the ESAR drawdown for this year. But in addition to that, we are going to be able to, we have some coronavirus relief fund money that we will be claiming. Those expenditures occurred last year, but the revenue's coming in this year. And so really, it's very close to being able to offset a majority of that, just because they're crossing fiscal years. So I feel very comfortable that we will be fine with this expenditure.
Thank you. I had already taken a look at the numbers myself, so I was confident that we were in fine shape. But we did need to ask the question in a very public fashion with a great deal of transparency. Mark, I appreciate your laying out the fact that this is not the only step being taken. $500, even in the best of times, may not seem like much to the recipient. But this is a good faith effort, coupled with the other steps that you have proposed, particularly the day a month, tremendous positive impact, even though everybody was still working perhaps as hard as they were before. But somehow, in the manner that it was received, I have been told the stress level was dissipated, not just for that day, but longer than that. And typically, when I first entered the management ranks well over 30 years ago, I attended a week-long seminar in Washington, DC, and high-price shrinks came from New York. And one of the things they told us is do not believe you can motivate people with money, because it doesn't happen. As soon as the money comes in, the benefit of that being there in terms of motivation is dissipated literally within days, if not hours. But I think your point of identifying that this is not the only step being taken, I expect that teachers and staff will understand that this is part of the overall package, and it is part of that which we can do. So thank you for the idea, and thank you for the presentation. I look forward to voting on this.
Thank you, Tom, Karen, and Dr. Henry. Just really very appreciative of what you're doing here and the moves that you have made. And I know there's been a concern on the board and certainly about the morale throughout our district, and I am very pleased that you are addressing those situations, even though I know in my heart you were addressing them way back when. I know that we have evolved to this point. And one of the things I thought was so impressive was, and even though I have a lot of belief in our teachers and how, what a great job they're doing, I also know that we are a team, and the team runs all the way from the top to the bottom, and that you're doing this and including people, including our support staff, and that they're getting this too. I was very tickled with this. So thank y'all very much for the suggestion. Thank you for making it work, and I too look forward to voting for this. Next up, we have a, the board will hold a public hearing to review and solicit public comment on targeted improvement plans of Bain Elementary School and Francon Elementary School. The infamous Dr. Linda Macias, Dr. Ashley Claiborne, and Dr. Tanya Corrie. Please come forward.
Good evening, President Kobe, board members, and Dr. Henry. You may recall that in the 2018 and 19 school year, our school district earned a 92 in the state accountability system. But we had two elementary campuses whose student performance placed them in the school improvement program per the Texas Education Agency. And so last year, we came before you, along with the two campuses, and shared the school improvement plan. I want to share with you that this past year, our, these two campuses, the staff did an incredible job in working towards those targets and increasing student performance, teacher capacity, and they were on track to meet their targets and exit the school improvement plan. And then, in March, COVID hit. And so you all know what happened then, the state testing and the accountability system was waived, but the status in the school improvement program for campuses was not. And so they had to, they have to continue in the school improvement program. But I will tell you that our two leaders, Ms. Martin, the principal at Francon, and Mr. Diaz, the principal at Bain, they are committed to continue moving forward with this progress and continuing the goals and exit the school improvement program. And I will tell you that they were so disappointed that they were not able to demonstrate the extreme progress that they had made and to be able to exit the program. So I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Claiborne, who will talk to you about the logistics of the school improvement process, and then Dr. Corrie will give you an overview of the plans.
We'll begin tonight by taking a look back. In the 2018-19 accountability system, Bain Elementary received an overall D rating, and Francon Elementary received an overall C rating, but a D rating in domains one and three of the system. Based on these ratings, the campuses were required to submit a targeted improvement plan to the board for approval, and this was done in November of 2019. The campuses were responsible for implementing the plan and evaluating it three times during the school year. Then, in the spring of 2020, the campuses would administer the STAR, meet their set targets, improve their accountability rating, and exit school improvement. That's what was supposed to happen. So during the 1920 school year, Bain and Francon implemented their improvement plans with fidelity. They evaluated student progress using locally developed assessments, and as Dr. Macias said, they were on target to meet the standards that they had set for themselves. And then, as we all know, COVID-19 began in the spring of 2020. On March 16th of 2020, Governor Abbott waived STAR testing for the 1920 school year in an effort to allow superintendents the opportunity to continue to prioritize the health and safety of students, faculty, and their family. Then on March 27th of 2020, the United States Department of Education approved the Texas Education Agency's waiver request to waive statewide assessment, academic accountability, and reporting requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act for the 1920 school year. As a result, all districts and campuses in Texas were given the rating of not rated declared state of disaster. Furthermore, a requirement of the federal waiver was that states continue all school improvement requirements into the 2020-21 school year. Therefore, Bain and Francon, who never had the opportunity to exit school improvement, had to complete the following requirements again this year. Complete a TEA-prescribed needs assessment tool. Develop a TEA-prescribed targeted improvement plan. Hold a campus-level public meeting for stakeholders to review the plan and provide feedback. Francon met this requirement on October 12th, and Bain met the requirement on October 23rd and 26th. And both campuses have to submit their plans to the board for approval. Upon completion of the needs assessment, the targeted improvement plans were written focusing on adult behaviors. On the dais, you have a copy of the plans. Please note that Francon's plan has a slight modification from what was provided in the board packet on the very first page in the data analysis section. Additionally, these are posted on the district website under the About Us tab on the School Ratings page. The targeted improvement plans consist of a desired annual outcome, followed by three 90-day cycles. For each 90-day cycle, the campus has determined action steps which will enable them to accomplish the 90-day outcome. Each of the action steps includes a start and end date, resources needed, persons responsible, evidence used to determine progress, and an evidence collection date. Additionally, each campus is required to set student-level academic performance goals at the Approaches, Meets, and Masters performance levels in three cycles. Before you now is a sample of the goal table from one of the targeted improvement plans. The Cycle 1 data review will include checkpoint data and will be held at the end of November. The Cycle 2 review will include district progress monitor data and will be held in mid-January. The Cycle 3 data review will include benchmark data and will be held at the beginning of April. Upon receipt of the STAR data in June, if we have STAR, we will complete the summative data evaluation. At this time, Dr. Corrie will share with you the contents of the campus-level plans.
For the 2020-21 school year, Bain Elementary has the following targets related to state accountability ratings. An overall rating of 84, a student achievement domain rating of 76, a school progress domain rating of 85, and a closing the gaps rating of 80. To reach those targets, Bain has three prioritized focused areas. Bain's first prioritized focused area is develop campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities. Bain's desired annual outcome for this prioritized focused area is to strengthen instructional leadership by improving the focus on quality first-time instruction. The first desired 90-day outcome is to improve administrative team coaching capacity as it relates to participation in weekly team planning, resulting in improved student outcomes. The second desired 90-day outcome, stronger instructional coaching of teachers to provide systematic improvement of first-time instruction. The third desired 90-day outcome, improved first instruction as a result of effective coaching and instructional leadership. Bain's second prioritized focused area is objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. The desired annual outcome for this focused area is as follows. Create instructional plans that truly address the academic needs of students and provide multiple opportunities for academic and social growth. The first desired 90-day outcome is expectations for lesson plans are outlined and modeled during weekly planning and implemented to reflect the campus expectations. The second desired 90-day outcome, instructional leaders will maximize planning sessions, resulting in the production of more rigorous lesson plans. And the third 90-day desired outcome, effective, productive planning sessions lead to rigorous and relevant instructional delivery. Bain's final prioritized focused area is data-driven instruction. The desired outcome for this area is proficient data analysis and identification of areas of improvement. The first desired 90-day outcome, expectations for data review and use during planning are outlined, modeled, and implemented. The second desired 90-day outcome, increased data analysis abilities will result in improved fluency and data-driven decisions. And the final desired 90-day outcome, ongoing data analysis leads to targeted instruction and interventions, increasing student academic achievement. For the 2020-21 school year, Francon Elementary has the following targets related to state accountability ratings. An overall rating of 82, a student achievement domain rating of 75, a school progress domain rating of 83, and a closing the gaps domain rating of 78. To accomplish these targets, Francon has one prioritized focused area. Objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. The desired annual outcome for this focused area is modeling during collaborative planning and integration of formative assessments. The first desired 90-day outcome is as follows. Lesson plans demonstrate improved alignment of objectives, instruction, and formative assessment, and are reflective of conversations and modeling opportunities during planning. The second desired 90-day outcome, lesson plans demonstrate alignment of objectives, instruction, and assessment, and are differentiated for our CFISC Connect learners. And the final 90-day desired outcome, implemented lesson plans are designed as expected, as evidenced by walkthroughs, by administrative walkthroughs. The district is providing several layers of support for both Bain and Francon. This includes content area coaches who support the campus as needed, bi-weekly coaching and/or collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement and Transformation, and the Assistant Superintendents of School Leadership. Also, both campuses are part of the CFISC monitored school process through which they receive a wide variety of support in various instructional areas. Progress is continuously monitored for both schools, and ongoing support is provided specifically to the needs of each campus. This concludes our presentation for the evening, and at this time, we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Jackson, you're up.
Thank you for the presentation. As always, it is quite thorough. Refresh my memory, what is the mobility on each of these two campuses?
I did not bring the mobility rate tonight, but we can provide that to the board on Monday.
When I first visited each of these campuses before I was a trustee, I took time to look at the numbers, since I'm a bit of a numbers geek, and I seem to recall the mobility was way over 20% in each case. I don't know if it still is or not. What is the, and 20% for the viewing audience means that if you start at that school in kindergarten, you do not leave that school in fifth grade. You've already have rolled out. For the, and I know when I was at Francon, when we established the Cyfair Full-Day Pre-K, for the, with the mobility rate of all, of the entire cohort that started as kindergarten students, only five were still there in fifth grade. I don't see that anything in either of these two plans addresses the very aggressive mobility rates that we have at the two campuses. The other question I have is, what percentage do, at each campus, do we have in-person versus remote learning?
For Francon Elementary, the Connect learners, it's 45%, face-to-face 54%. For Bain Elementary, Connect 37.53% and face-to-face 63%.
And Mr. Jackson, just to address a little bit about your statement regarding mobility, because you're right, it is a very valid point, I'm going to ask Dr. Corrie to share just a little bit about our reading transition specialists and what their role is at these campuses.
There are select campuses who are part of the monitored school process that receive support from a reading transition specialist. That position was created specifically to address the need of high mobility rates. We understand that there's research out there that says that students, and this is really expected, that students who are, who have a high transit level move from campus to campus, they were tracked from elementary all the way through high school, and despite their academic level, because not all of them perform below level, they graduated at a lower rate than their counterparts who started at one campus and finished that campus throughout their elementary year or secondary year, whatever level there was. So we hired reading transition specialists to support these students in reading, knowing that if we can capture those gaps in reading, it will take care of some of those other academic gaps that may exist. So both Bain and Francon have a reading transition specialist, which is a district position housed on their campus for the entire year, and those teachers work with students who have high mobility rates who come in for that particular year and are reading at least two grade levels below. They provide high intensive reading intervention in addition to their other coursework. That's an additional supplement to try to- That's an additional supplement to try to help close that gap for those students.
Excellent. And is that information contained in these reports that we, that we approve?
That information is not contained in the reports.
We can add them into the improvement plans.
You know, I would like that. That, to me, seems to be a critical part of your strategy, and particularly in the COVID environment itself. I remain concerned that, that we have technology challenges, and I don't know how quickly that's going to be addressed since the entire world has a technology infrastructure challenge. But you have addressed the mobility, and with that being in the report, I'm far more supportive of it. I do remember everything you tried to teach me when I went to your campus, when, when you were on campus. I, I tried to pay attention to, to almost everything that, that you told me. You know, the, I mentioned this two months ago, the Horace Mann Institute, and Linda, you chuckled because I called it Thomas Mann, but I, I got one of the two names right, identified that in periods of trauma, academic attainment goes down. When I went through this, I did not see anything special. And, and right now, the, all of our students are experiencing trauma. Even those who come to school wearing the mask and having the plastic around has an impact. I remain concerned, and, and the commissioner talked about this as well, that in certain areas, the, the community trauma tends to be a little higher than in other areas. I don't know if that exists for these two campuses. It may or may not. Do we have any special needs to, to address that here? Because that has a definite impact on academic attainment.
Mr. Jackson, that is not something that, that as we work with the campuses, they feel we need to place in, in, in the plan. However, I will tell you that we, we address that on an ongoing basis with the psychologists that we have in place, providing, we provide a lot of training for our teachers on the, at the beginning of the year, and we can continue to do that as well.
Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Ms. Blanchard.
Okay, just to make sure I understand, it appears from what I see that for the assessment types that we're doing, relying on DPMs and benchmarks. So, if, if the state does waive STAR for the spring semester, that will have no impact on this?
So, at this time, we...
Being able, I mean, being able to complete it, because I feel ba, I feel bad, they've worked hard all last year, and then the last three months of school, and now they're starting all over. So, if STAR is waived, is that going to have any impact on these plans?
It's our hope, and at this time, I would say it is a hope, that if they do waive STAR in accountability, that they come up with some type of plan where schools that are showing improvement, even on local assessments, can exit school improvement. But they have not provided a plan for that as of yet.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Og, Dr. Ogletree, excuse me.
What are the demographic breakdowns of Bain and Francone this time?
We did not bring the demographic data with us, but we can provide that on Monday along with the mobility rates.
Along with the socioeconomic?
Yes, sir. That will be included.
This is for the year, the school year 1819, right?
That is correct. The data were based on the 1819 school year.
What was the grade in the 1718 school year?
In 1718, the campus ratings were met standard.
Dr. Gori, when, when did you leave Francone? What school year was your last school year there at Francone?
1718.
And would you also bring the demographic breakdown for the year 1718 also?
Yes, sir.
This Connect, what, what, the 45% at Francone, 30, was it 37 at Bain? Is that Connect?
37% at Bain and 45% at Francone, yes, sir.
For these, these two schools are, is the Connect operation the same as, as it is at all of our other elementary schools?
When you say the Connect operation, are you talking about the instruction that's happening to our, to our virtual students?
Yes, that the teacher is spending part-time with Connect and part-time in-person instruction.
I'm going to ask the two principals if you'll, if you'll come up and share how you, how you have your Connect and your face-to-face students.
Good job, Linda.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, to answer the question, basically, what we have is, most of our classes are hybrid classes, so we do have a teacher teaching both live and, and face-to-face students. So, students that are on, on connecting from home, as well as students that are present in the classroom. That is the vast majority of our, of our, of our classrooms in third, fourth, and fifth grade. In our, in our primary grades, however, they're either all face-to-face, or they are online. So, we don't have hybrid or merge classes in the primary grades, pre-KK first. In classes, as we go into the second mark, the, the marking period two, however, with a number of 37% of students, only students connecting from home, we will have some classes in primary grades that are going into hybrid models, meaning we will have students that are face-to-face and students that are connecting from home in the same classroom.
For the first marking period in our pre-KK N1 classes, they were primarily one learning model, so either all online or all face-to-face, with the exception of our bilingual classroom in first grade, which, due to certifications, was hybrid. Moving into the next marking period for those primary grades, there are two kindergarten classes that will become hybrid. Those teachers were given the choice to cha, to keep a pure model and shift students around, but they were devastated at the thought of not having their kiddos with them for the new marking period, and those teachers chose to go hybrid. For third, fourth, and fifth, the classes are hybrid, but when it comes to math, we have some additional support personnel who take the face-to-face students, and they are expert mathematics instructors, and they teach those students while the classroom teacher focuses on the online students. And we found great success with that. We do the same for some of our third-grade readers, because that's such a critical reading year, as they transition from learning how to read to learning to read. We have two classes that are some of our students who are reading below level coming into the grade, and those are peer classes, so it's just online or just face-to-face.
So, this is to both, both of you, you believe that you can meet these benchmarks, these things that have been set with the system you're presently operating?
I do. We have put some additional things in place for our Connect students. We have monthly materials pickups where we run paper copies of some of the online curriculum, so those kids have an opportunity to paper pencil, practice the procedures and test-taking strategies that we know that they'll need to use. And we have quite a bit of support, as Dr. Gori said, with the reading transition specialists. We've had additional training for our teachers and additional materials that have been provided. So, we feel good about it, speaking for myself.
Yes, I mean, that's definitely a, a question we ask ourselves every day. We, you know, we, with all the challenges that we're facing, but definitely, where our teachers are working hard and, and there's a lot of focus on, on first instruction. We are in the classrooms monitoring. There is no, I mean, we have a plan that we're following, as you, as you reviewed, and we are following it, and that's our goal. And so, we do believe that if we continue, just like Ms. Martin shared, we have packets are being picked up, we have opportunities for our families to come and get support with technology. That happens quite often. They come on campus, and we assist them to make sure that they are connecting for those that are not face-to-face. So, a lot of work is being done, and we are on target to, to perform, if that's what we need to do this year.
Dr. Macias, when, when plans like these are being formulated, Dr. Gori, whoever can answer this, how much input does the principal have in, in the plan?
Dr. Gori, go ahead.
This plan was in complete collaboration with the principals. Last year, we sat down many times and looked over data, took into consideration all things that needed to be considered, and developed this plan with the principals. They pretty much led the, the collaboration with us following the guidance that the state has put in place, but it was an extremely collaborative process, and the same thing happened this year. It's a continuation mostly of what was written last year. There are a few tweaks and changes, but 100% input from the principals and a very collaborative process.
This is their plan.
Good. Now, let me ask you this too. Prior to 1819, have we had other elementary schools that received a overall D-rating?
No, sir. We had not, we had not.
And so, it didn't take place in year 1718, the school year 1617?
And when did the new accountability system?
So, that, the 1819 was the first year of the A-through-F ratings. In the past, the prior years before that, the ratings were either met standard or improvement required, and all of our campuses met standard. Before that, we had exemplary recognized acceptable, unacceptable, and we never had any elementary campuses or any campuses that were unacceptable.
So, not, postelementary was never on any?
No, they were not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hanneman.
Thank you for the information. I remember when we, we talked about this last year, and I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. I've had the pleasure of visiting both schools, and I have met with both principals, and I just want you to know, I believe in you, and I know that you will be successful. I have no doubt about it. And when we have such a focus on data, data-driven instruction, data-driven measurements, I know that you all also know that behind those data points are people, right? Little ones and big ones, students and teachers. So, I know why we're so focused on data, it's really the people, right? It's the kids and the teachers. So, I know that you have that same focus, and we do as well. My other comment is, and you touched on it when you said this is their plan, this, it's not for the board to rewrite your plan. So, you have worked really hard on creating this plan. We, we're going to trust you, and we have faith in you. So, we're here to support you, not to change the way, you're the experts on this, we're, not us. And then finally, I have to believe that with all this increased investment in staff and in processes and in the system, that this is, the progress will continue. I mean, you're going to meet your goals, and then you're just going to keep going. And the staff that are trained in this unique and challenging situation with this plan are going to be even more successful and better teachers. So, I think that as hard as it is right now, it's going to pay off, and it will make a difference for the, not just for the kiddos, but for the teachers and the staff for years to come. So, thank you, and hang in there, and, and we believe in you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanneman. Couple of things. Number one, I know when I visited Bain, and I've visited a few times, and like Mr. Jackson said, there was a lot of transitory changing, and if I remember correctly, there is a charter school, and I know y'all think I get on my charter bandwagon once in a while, but there was a charter school that relieved students that they knew were not going to pass, and they had to come back into Bain. And I know there was a lot of work trying to bring those kids up to level. So, I feel like Bain has continually had some challenges, but I felt like that they were addressing them and doing a great job. Francone, and I know Dr. Gori was at Francone, and I heard the inference from Dr. Ogletree about how wonderful you are, but I do remember that y'all were having to go into the apartment complexes and work with students there and doing after-school hours, right?
We absolutely did. We went to meet the students where they were to make sure that we could provide interventions for them.
And do, do they still do that? Is that still part of their mode of operandi?
So, we will be offering tutoring this year. Our differentiation this year looks like some of two students will be tutored through Connect, and some will be face-to-face, and we're offering it two to three times a week, depending on the week of the month.
Awesome. All right. Well, I, I, I just, number one, I want to commend the two principals, because y'all are relatively new to these two schools, and thank you for taking on that challenge, and I appreciate that. And that's certainly not to diminish the principals that were before you. I know this A-through-F rating is ridiculous, and I can't even believe that we have to deal with it, but I also am very pleased with what we're doing. I like seeing this. I will tell you, Caesar, you're going to have to really bump it up here. She's ahead of you on your, your planning and implementation, just going to tell you, but that's women for you, right? I'm just kidding. I'm very proud of what you're doing here. Thank you, Dr. Macias, Dr. Claiborne, Dr. Tor Gori. I just, I, I look forward to seeing where we're going to go with this. And one final thing, there, and I forgot what the terminology is. What is the terminology? Cohorts. You have cohorts in the elementary level, and are they also working with you guys? Do they work with you on strategies? Am I understanding it correctly? Clusters. Okay. I got that word wrong. I got the first initial right, okay.
Yes, we do have an opportunity to collaborate with our cluster around four times a year at minimum, but the informal collaboration extends to be far beyond that. I've had the benefit of being able to walk a few campuses of fellow cluster members and see what they have going on there, and it's been a great igniter of some significant ideas that we've been able to implement.
Thank you.
He is absolutely a cluster, a part of Cluster Nine. We were so connected and working together and sharing ideas, and, and even when we don't have meetings scheduled, we do collaborate and, and reach out for support. So, there's a lot of ideas and, and, and things we learn through just that connection with our, with our cluster principals and, and leaders. But one thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I saw this slide there that talks about the support from ISC, but the, the, that slide does not do, you know, I'm just thinking about the level of support since I'm coming into Bain, and our, our Assistant Superintendents and our, and everyone in curriculum and instruction is, the amount of support is just amazing. And I just wanted to thank you for allowing us that, that, that amount of support with, with staff, with resources, and, and so that is definitely making this a little bit more manageable.
Thank you. Dr. Macias, do we still do vertical planning? Are we still doing that?
Yes, we do.
I love that idea. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you for the report. Appreciate y'all being here. Wish you all the best. I look forward to visiting, so thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Doc, Mr., Dr. Jackson, take it.
You know, you know, with John on the board and everybody else, I think you had to have a PhD to be able to enter in the conversation. Linda, refresh my memory, but, but what we call D-level now, didn't that meet standard years ago?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What we call a D-assessment now, didn't that meet standard years ago?
Yes, it's the, the, the state kind of... Yes, it's the, the, the state kind of lumped the D and the F together, but, but yes. I mean, there's a whole other level.
So it's not a situation where we may have changed campus leadership that all of a sudden there was a tremendous drop off in attainment. It's merely how we categorize the attainment now.
That's correct.
And I would make the point, my requesting as a board member to include addressing mobility in no way says that I need to have a hand in what the campuses are doing. But it is my job to make certain that the report as prepared is as complete and does in fact document that which we are doing. So thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. The board will receive a report on Community Leadership Committee 87th Legislative Session priorities. Presenters are Dr. Mark Henry, Teresa Hall, and Frances Romero. I'm going to turn it over to Teresa, who will introduce our guest.
Well, I think Dr., excuse me, Dr. David Thompson provided a great introduction to the legislative priorities that we want to share with you this evening. The first presentation this evening on legislative priorities will be presented by Frances Romero. Frances is our vice chair of the Community Leadership Committee. And Frances has been a very active volunteer and leader in our community and school district for many, many years. I think she kind of began all of her volunteer time through our Partners in Education program, working with Pam Scott, actually served, I think, on our executive board for the VIPS program. And then she transitioned into being an active participant on our CLC and now has moved in as co-chair with Tommy. Unfortunately, Tommy was unable to be here this evening. He is coaching, I think, one of his daughter's soccer games. So hopefully he'll get to watch the taped version of it. But again, the priorities that Frances will be sharing will be the Community Leadership Committee priorities. And they really are the true work of that committee. They are the areas that they feel are important and that they want to focus on. Absolutely relied on some input or just some, you know, technical background information from the administration. But these are truly priorities that this committee has developed and are bringing forward to share with you this evening. Later on in the agenda, we will, the administration will be presenting district, CFISD district priorities. And those are going to be separate. Those are going to be separate from these. So that, I think it's important that the community understands, you know, the work of this group of community leaders and that these are their priorities and it's not the administration pushing those priorities on this group. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Frances for the presentation.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that introduction. Frances Romero, Vice Chair of the CFISD Community Leadership Committee under the leadership of Chairman Tommy Ballas. Tommy couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here and happy to present on behalf of him and our entire group, the CLC, our legislative priorities for the upcoming 87th Texas Legislative Session. Before I begin, I would like to briefly mention for those who may not know about the Community Leadership Committee, that we are a volunteer group of parents, businesspeople, retirees, faith-based and community members who believe that having a strong, independent school district is important to the economic well-being of the Cypress Fairbanks community. We meet once a month to learn and understand the current systems, mandates, and issues at the local, state, and federal level that impact the quality of our education system. We use our sphere of influence to share this information with the residential and business communities, enabling them to become more knowledgeable and engaged. We ensure that our elected officials are aware of the impact of current systems and mandates on our quality of education and we hold them accountable for future legislation and regulations. In order to effectively communicate with our elected officials, we examine the current state of our district, identify its needs, and then set legislative priorities. These priorities, which I'm about to present to you today, will serve as our advocacy roadmap as we head into the next legislative session. Our top priority begins with the extra expenses incurred by the district due to the COVID-19 pandemic. To provide COVID-19 hold harmless, fund reductions in state funding due to COVID-19 and unreimbursed COVID-19 expenditures. The state allocated federal funding from the CARES Act to the school district, but then reduced its financial obligation by that same amount. So we didn't really actually receive extra funding to reimburse the district for the extra costs incurred to reopen our schools safely. And I will leave, well, we heard the details earlier from Karen, how those numbers work, that the funding really was meant to just kind of fill in holes so that there wouldn't have to be any cuts. So we would be advocating for additional funding on top of what they've received. The second point under this priority is to waive accountability requirements for the 2020-21 academic school year. These are unusual times, as we also heard from Mr. Thompson. Not a good year to measure accountability, you know, for our schools and our, and our districts. There are too many variables this school year that would drastically change the otherwise normal performance or typical performance of students and, and an overall performance in a district. The anxieties of virtual learning on both our students and teachers is just one example of a variable that could skew the results of a typical student performance. This past summer, the CLC was called to action and we sent emails and we made phone calls to Governor Abbott asking that he request a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education to waive federal accountability requirements for the 2020-21 school year. This measure is necessary for the governor to have the ability to waive the state accountability requirements that are mandated under federal law. We are aware that some federal and state leaders would like to see data on how the circumstances of the pandemic has affected our students' academic progress. If state testing is to occur, we would support that the test data be only used for benchmarking purposes and not for the purpose of accountability in rating our schools. Our next priority is to establish adequate and equitable funding. And this particular priority really focuses on the accomplishments that were made last session with the passage of House Bill 3 and the additional funding that our school districts received. As Mr. Thompson mentioned earlier, we don't want to go backward. There were such great accomplishments made in the area of, of school funding, starting with the increase of the basic allotment. And so we want to see that continue to go forward. And we know it's going to be a really tight year in terms of money, but we're really going to be advocating as hard as we can as parents and all the different stakeholders in this community to our legislators to try to keep the funding going for House Bill 3. The second bullet point states to increase the state funding formula to 50 state, 50 local. We're almost there, but not quite. Our local taxes are still carrying over 50%. So that's something that, that we will, we will ask. We know that, again, we recognize the uncertainties of what the state budget is going to look like, but it doesn't hurt to ask. The third bullet is to adjust the basic allotment to parallel increased inflationary costs. And this is something that is, has never really been taken into account by the legislature until last session. But I don't think that House Bill 3, and Karen could probably answer that more accurately, but I don't think that inflation is considered as something that would be a constant as the cost of education increases per child every year. So our districts really need to, to get that financial assistance to keep up with that. The last bullet point, oppose diverting funds to private and charter schools through vouchers, savings accounts, scholarships, credits, et cetera, or other non-education expenses. As a, as a, the Community Leadership Committee of parents and business owners and community members, we've been pretty firm on this particular stance that public funds need to stay in public schools. So as Dr. Thompson mentioned earlier, the amount of money going to charters in comparison to what our public schools are receiving is, I think to quote him, I think he said it was ridiculous or something along those lines and we would have to agree with that. So public funds need to stay with our public schools. Third priority is to prepare students for success. And this priority is an emphasis on funding also and not going backward, beginning with the first point and maintaining funding provided by House Bill 3 to cover costs of full-day pre-K career and technical education, including seventh and eighth grade, which, which are new, and mainstream special education. These programs are critical to the future academic success of our students as they provide a lot of growth for different types of learners. Looking at this from a long-term perspective, full-day pre-K could be the key to closing the achievement gap over time, that, that particular component alone. So we think that that's extremely important. We don't want to lose our full-day pre-K. Second point, increase funding for all other special education instructional arrangements. Here, we are asking the state to increase funding for other special, specific levels of special education, not just mainstream. Additional resources and services are needed for the more severe disabilities and that requires more money. And that's not, that's not taken into consideration when the state is evaluating the funding for special ed. They, they tend to concentrate more on mainstream. So we'll be advocating for those other areas that, that need that extra money and that's just not there right now with the current funding system. And our next bullet point, eliminate testing that is not federally required. According to my research, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Macias, but federal law requires that each child be tested every year in grades three through eight in reading and math and twice in science. Texas exceeds that with two additional writing tests and one additional social studies test. In high school, students must be tested once in three subjects, reading, math, and science. Texas exceeds that with an additional history and English test and two incorporated writing tests. So if we can reduce the number of tests that are not federally required, we think that would be extremely helpful, not just for our students, but for, for our teachers as well. The next bullet point, replace STAR with meaningful, nationally-normed student assessments that gauge student learning without high stakes for students. High stakes being the key term in this particular point. The high stakes associated with standardized tests should be removed from our students. Denying students' grade promotion or diploma based on a single measure when they have met all other requirements just places too much emphasis on standardized testing. Our next bullet point, remove the expiration date for the individual graduation committees. Currently, the expiration date is 2023. I'm not sure why the legislature passes this particular policy in increments, but we will be asking or advocating that they make this policy permanent. It's been very beneficial and even though there's a small number of graduate, or graduating students who have used this vehicle to be able to graduate, it's important. We want, we want all of our, our seniors to graduate. And so we think that this is a great program and that, something that really shows how they can master their subject or subjects in a, in a more comprehensive way than just spending one day sitting for four hours taking a test. That really doesn't measure their overall performance throughout the school year. And in conclusion, for the, for priority three, we have eliminate the letter grade rating system and restore the exemplary recognized and unacceptable rating system. And that was discussed earlier by one of the members of the administration, that the A and, the AF system is really not a fair system in rating or looking at the, the big picture of the overall performance of a school district. I see this as the same as a high-stakes test on our kids. You're using one tool, one day to evaluate someone's performance when you're, you're not looking at what they've done throughout the entire year. Well, I see this happening with this current A through F rating system on our districts. We have 92 campuses. Two of them were placed on a school improvement plan. We had a 92% score the 2018-19 year, as was discussed earlier. But because those two campuses were placed on a school improvement plan, the district's grade went, went down to a B, which to me is not really a true reflection of how our district performed overall. So we would be asking for, for us to go back to the prior system before, I guess before the met standard, because I think for, this was two systems ago. So we're going to be asking for this specifically for, from our legislators. And I think this is also something that's been discussed in other districts throughout the state who really liked this system and would like to go back to it as well. Priority four, ensure school effectiveness. We begin with ensuring that schools receive public funds and that are held to equivalent accountability, transparency, governance, and safety standards. And this would apply to charter schools and any other educational systems that receive public money. Any, any entity, a public entity that, or any entity, because I don't really consider, I mean, I think charters are sort of a hybrid of private and public, but they, everyone needs to be treated the same. As Dr. Henry has mentioned earlier, the level, the level field, the playing field needs to be level. And we all, public ISDs and charter schools need to be, need to have the same rules, need to follow the same rules. So that's something that we will continue to advocate on. The next bullet point is to fund and support adequate compensation, retirement, and benefits to attract and retain quality teachers. HB 3 was a great start and we would love to see that to continue. Once the state's economy bounces back, we are hoping that the funding will continue to increase. Our basic allotment will increase as well as some of the other areas for our special education needs. Our next bullet is support and fund efforts to train and recruit a more diverse educator pool that reflects the demographics of Texas. And I think that's especially important for CFISD because our, our demographics are, are truly reflective of this, of that of the state of Texas. And so it's important that our, our teachers in our classrooms are sort of reflective of the, the population who they're teaching. The next bullet point, to increase funding for improving the safety and security of students and staff, including mental health support. I'd like to put emphasis on the mental health aspect, which is extremely important to the CLC. There is a cause and effect relationship between mental health and violence in schools. With the proper resources in place to assist students in crisis that could mitigate and prevent potential violent acts in schools and positively affect a child's long-term development. The mental health intervention team that was implemented by this board and Dr. Henry is an excellent beginning and has a great potential to grow and help every student who's in need. And this brings us to our final priority, increase local control. We begin this with to enlist local community input and State Board of Education approval before the TEA commissioner can approve new charter, charter schools or expand existing charter schools. The CLC, this past, I don't know, it was a couple of months ago, we participated in phone calls and, and emails to our members of the State Board of Education on some of the charters that were, had been approved by the TEA and were up before the State Board of Education recently for review. And I, I think that it was effective, our efforts, because one of the charter applications that would have been here, sort of in our Houston area, not necessarily in Cypress Fairbanks, but in the Houston area. not necessarily in Cypress Fairbanks, but in the Houston area, it was vetoed. And we were ecstatic to hear those results. But our efforts will be to ask that the approval system first go through the State Board of Education instead of through the TEA commissioner, and then have input from the community to almost command that, to put notices to the community so that they are aware of charters that could possibly be coming into their neighborhoods, and give them the opportunity to testify and to let the board know how they feel about these charters coming in. The next bullet, to protect the ability of school districts to support pro-education organizations that educate legislators and the public at large. We think it's important for school districts to be able to advocate for their employees and their students through these pro-education organizations. And they get extra perks, training, and they get additional support in terms of getting updates from the legislature and really understanding some of the policies that are up for vote. And, you know, if we didn't have, if our school boards did not have those resources from those organizations, you would have to be paying, you know, out of your own resources to hire someone to be able to carry out those functions. So we will be advocating that our school districts be able to be able to support those organizations and be a part of them. And finally, increase the state contribution toward health insurance while also allowing local school districts with TRS active care to search for better health insurance options. And our teachers are the heart of this district and should have access to good, affordable healthcare. And we will be advocating to the state to appropriate additional funds to districts so that they can support our teachers with this expense. And if the state does not do this, then they should allow districts to opt out of TRS active care so that they can seek other options that are more competitively priced. And this concludes our CLC priorities for the 87th Texas Legislative Session. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. We'll start out with Ms. Heinemann, who is not familiar with your organization at all, I don't think.
No, in fact, I'm just incredibly proud of the CLC. I know how much work goes into creating these legislative priorities. And I just want to say thank you, Frances, and thank you to representatives of the CLC who are here tonight and for your whole organization. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this. And really, as you said, this is the advocacy roadmap. So as the session gets started and we start to work with our elected officials, this is very helpful because as things come up and you say, you can always go to this and say, how does this, is that something we want to fight for or not? We've already decided what our priorities are. And it does give you that roadmap to follow. I will say that from everything we've heard about the upcoming session, that your grassroots advocacy efforts are going to be more important now than ever before. If we have limited access to our elected officials, meaning we can't go into the Capitol as much as we like to, if we have in the past, we're really going to lean on and lean into our community to be those advocates for our public schools, for our students, and for our teachers. So, thank you. Great job. A lot of work went into this. We're very grateful for you, and I'm grateful that you're going to be fighting for our schools during the session.
Thank you, and I just want to point out that this was a collaborative effort amongst every member in the CLC. We had a few Zoom meetings, and we went through each and every one of these very carefully to make sure that these are the priorities that we want to focus on.
Dr. O.
No questions, just thank you all for being strong advocates for public education in our students and for the limited things that we can do. And Austin, I will see you, I'll be in Austin quite a bit.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackshear.
No questions, other than to echo my colleagues and say thank you for being an advocate for Cyfair ISD and for our students. And you can tell that a lot of work went into this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, who doesn't know anything about your organization either, would like to say a few things.
Strangely enough, no questions, but thank you for being here tonight. I stood where, over here, I guess, nine or 10 years ago. What you do is tremendously important. A former legislator, who himself was a school board trustee, Bill Caligari, made the point at the Capitol, and it still is as true today as it was then. What he told us as we gathered around him, "You do more good than you know. Your presence is noted, it is noticeable. You are, in fact, a force to be reckoned with and a force for the good." Beyond that, I, like Julie, but also Ms. Blackshear, who served as well, know how much time and effort you put into the preparation of these, but this is really the culmination. You spend all year learning and updating about public education in the district with specificity to be able to get to these points. So I commend you as well as the other members of the committee, and I thank you for doing so.
Thank you.
Ms. Romero, just, once again, I'm very impressed with the dedication that this cross-section of our community comes together and pulls this together. I brought with me tonight because I had gotten, I guess, a preliminary what your bullet points were going to be. And Ms. Heinemann and I both served on a delegate assembly that we recently had through Tasbi, which was all Zoom for the most part. But I brought their agenda, their resolutions. And they have basically a formal resolution, and then there were 50 additional resolutions coming from districts all over the state of Texas. So I brought that for you to have. And it's a good thing to refer to because you will find that y'all are referencing, and you are pretty much doing exactly, maybe not exactly, the same terminology, but everything that you cover, they're covering. And that's a good thing to know, that you're not alone, that there are districts out there across the state that are feeling the same way. I will tell you what I was told a long time ago. Put your elevator speech together, because when you go in and visit with the legislators, you are not going to be able to go over all of these points. So pick out the ones that you want to do, and then have your other people do the same thing. And that way, it makes more of an impression that you know what you're talking about instead of trying to read through something or just handing them a piece of paper. So, and one final little thing, and I've said this before, that I learned this from DC, contact their aides on a Sunday night. That's amazing thing to know, but they do read their emails on a Sunday night. If you wanted to get to that legislator, send it to their aides on a Sunday night, and they'll talk to them on Monday. Just a couple little tidbits there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to the consensus items. 9A, the board consider approving the minutes of the October 12, 2020 regular board meeting. Are there any points of discussion, or can we just move on from there? Are we okay? Thank you. The board will now proceed to the non-consensus action items of the portion of the agenda. We've already moved to consent, number 10A. 10B, the board consider approving the budget amendments for the period of July 1, 2020 through September 30, 2020. Do we have any questions or concerns? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. 10C, the board consider adopting legislative priorities for the 87th Legislative Session. That's what we just went over, right?
No.
I'm sorry. Oh, this is ours. Excuse me. All right. Presentation by Dr. Henry, Teresa Hall, Karen Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Covey, trustees. We're going to give a very brief presentation of the CFISD legislative priorities. They're very similar to the CLC, but we decided last legislative session that some things that the CLC can advocate for are not appropriate for the district to advocate for. So we kind of split those up a little bit. So I'll ask Teresa to start that off, if she would, please.
I think Dr. Henry gave a great introduction. As Karen Smith is coming up, she'll start the presentation by sharing the school finance priorities. And I think David Thompson summed it up beautifully. I think this is going to be a do-no-harm session. We're just going to have to be prepared to run good defense and make certain that we're able to maintain the level of funding that we currently have. All of the great things that we felt came out of HB 3 to see that that's maintained and carried forward. So I think you're going to see a lot of that. And the other areas, obviously, assessment and accountability, just like the CLC. And as David Thompson pointed out, we're looking to waive that accountability for the 2021 school year. And then in the other areas, I think you're going to see that those are really similar priority statements that we had the last session. And again, I think they're areas that we still feel we need to continue to run good defense on and make certain that there are not any bills that are passed that could do harm to our school district or to other school districts. So I'm going to let Karen start that off and just kind of detail out the finance ones, and then Linda will pick up the assessment and accountability.
And before Karen talks, I just want to add one little short statement. I really am proud of our legislative delegation, whether they be Republican or Democrat. They're always very complimentary and work with Cyfair ISD. And I really think they do everything possible they can to help us achieve our goals. So I appreciate all of our legislative delegation.
Thank you, Dr. Henry and Teresa. First priority that we'll be discussing is over school finance. And as you heard David Thompson mention, one of the keys is to maintain the level of funding provided by HB 3 and prioritize the maintenance of a stable predictable funding formula. And as you well know, in the 86th Legislative Session, we had concerns about HB 3. And so we're just asking that they make sure that they maintain that funding despite the fact that of tax compression that we were so concerned about. As that happens, more state aid funding has to be provided. Also, identify additional state revenue sources and dedicate those solely to public funding. Also, increase the basic allotment each biennium to parallel increased inflationary cost. And the best method of doing this would be through the Consumer Price Index. And also, increase the funding for all other special education instructional arrangements. Frances so well explained how this basically works, but to add funding towards the other arrangements that were not covered in House Bill 3. Also, funding the local cost of state mandated programs. Some examples of these would be special education cameras, safety and security, districts' contributions towards TRS, such as the statutory minimum, as well as mental health support. Also, another item that we're recommending is to provide the greater funding for facilities. What that is, is that's the instructional facilities allotment and the existing debt allotment. Currently, it is reduced, the funding is actually reduced as a district's property wealth per student becomes greater. Therefore, we're asking that it not be reduced because of that. In addition, provide funding to bridge the digital divide among K through 12 students. David Thompson alluded to this, and we believe this is a big priority. If you recall, when the board approved in July the one-to-one program, we brought to you about $5 million worth of hotspots, as well as the Wi-Fi support for those. That was $5 million for 20,000 hotspots in service towards that. So you can just see quickly how expensive that is. Also, provide funding for the reduction of state funding, un-reimburse expenditures and academic needs of students due to COVID-19. We believe that the academic needs are going to be greater and greater in future years in the next biennium because of what occurred with COVID-19. Also, remove the penalty for the local optional homestead exemption in the comptroller's property value assignment. And basically, what happens with this is the state just assumes that the district is taxing on its entire taxable value, rather than what really is occurring is that value is removed whenever an individual gets the optional homestead exemption. Their house value is reduced first before applying property taxes and creating what their tax bill would essentially be. In addition, level the playing field with charter schools by eliminating the small and mid-size allotment that is not provided on the same basis to public school districts. And so what you can actually have is you, because of this allotment, you can actually have a larger charter school than a school district that is getting this small or mid-size allotment when a school district is not getting it. Also, increase the state's contribution towards health insurance. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Macias so that she can share with you, talk about state accountability.
So, under assessment accountability, we have four areas that we would like to recommend. The first one, David Thompson actually spoke about, and that is to waive the accountability A to F rating system for the 2021 school year. We all know we're in the middle of a pandemic. There are many challenges that our students are facing, many gaps in their instruction and their education. And we believe that this needs to be waived for the 2021 school year. The second one is one that I'd like to talk just a little bit more about, and that is to extend the deadline for our teacher reading academies. In the 86th Legislative Session, under House Bill 3, there is a mandate that campus, elementary campus principals who reside over a campus that has K through 3rd grade and all teachers who are teaching in a K through 3rd grade must participate and complete a teacher literacy achievement academy, basically a reading academy. This academy is about 60 to 80 hours in duration. And there's a required size of a cohort and a length of it. And to be able to get almost 3,000 teachers and principals through, we really needed to have started the academy in the summer. Well, that was not appropriate to do that. There are too many challenges, too many, just things that our teachers and leaders were dealing with. And what the law says right now is that the academies have to be completed, teachers and principals, by the 2021 and 2022 school year. So what this priority request is to extend the deadline to the 2023, 2024 school year. The next priority is one that Ms. Romero talked about, and that is basically eliminating the letter grade rating system and implement or re-implement the exemplary-recognized acceptable and unacceptable rating. It really is a rating that is a little clearer and that parents will understand. And then our fourth is to remove the expiration of the individual graduation committees, IDCs, which Ms. Romero also talked about. As she said, it's a small number, 211 students out of our 8,000-plus actually graduated under this plan. And it's an opportunity to be able to demonstrate their knowledge or mastery of the Texas Central knowledge and skills outside of the EOCs, and do it in a different way. So those are the four areas that we're recommending under assessment and accountability. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Hall, I believe. Back to you.
The school choice priorities are the same as the last session. We really haven't modified those unless there are some modifications you wish to make to those. School vouchers were not a real focus last session. We don't have any reason to think really it's going to be this session. We've not heard a lot of talk about that. But I think it's important to keep that there, that we keep the focus on opposing any type of school voucher program. Transparency, again, this is kind of a do-no-harm, run-good-defense, make certain that there's not legislation passed that would require very burdensome reporting for school districts in what they say is their effort to be transparent. burdensome reporting for school districts and what they say is their effort to be transparent. A lot of the reports and things that were included in many bills, the last couple of sessions would be incredibly burdensome for school districts and really unnecessary. So we want to continue to run defense on those areas as well. Safety and security measures, as you know, in the eighty-sixth legislative session, safety and security was a major focus. There was limited funding that was provided for that, but we moved forward as a school district in implementing a very comprehensive safety and security plan. This board, again, back in two thousand and eleven, approved the formation of our police department, which we have expanded greatly since two thousand and eleven, and I think is one of the most critical pieces in our safety and security plan that we have. And again, that's all funded locally with no support from the state. Our mental health intervention teams that we have formed, as Ms. Romero pointed out, we formed two of those teams after the, the massive school shootings and all of that that occurred, what was that, two thousand and eighteen? And so those were actually funded with federal dollars. We allocated Title III funds to pay for the salaries and training and support for those mental intervention teams. So there's really limited state dollars that are being allocated to support in those areas. Local control, you will see a couple of priorities here that are similar to what you saw with the CLC. We continue to ask for local control on school start date. I'm still just amazed that we cannot get any movement on that. There's so many so-called loopholes with that, but I don't think we've been supportive of having to go through a district of innovation process in order to have control over our school start date. So we continue to push for that. And again, as Ms. Romero pointed out, we really strongly believe that there should be community input and more oversight and involvement in approving the expansion of charter schools, new charters, and then expansion of existing ones. So that is a new priority in the local control area for this session. And then on transportation, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sprague to finish that out, and then we'll be happy to take your input and feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. The last two priority items are related to transportation, and our first recommendation is to increase the percentage of reimbursement for transportation costs. And previously, TAs reported in a legislative budget board that back in, let's see, nineteen eighty-four, they were funding about seventy to eighty percent of transportation costs for school districts. And then in two thousand and five, it's been reduced down to twenty-three percent. And in our current budget year, we're just under twenty percent in terms of what our funding reimbursement would be from the state. So when you look at a fifty million dollar budget, that's about forty million dollars that we're having to use local funds. That would certainly be better used in the classroom to support our students and our teachers to do that. And the last item is just to exempt school districts from paying tolls. It's a fairly minor amount when you look at the big scheme of our budget, but it's still expenditures that we could use to put back into the classroom. And just to give you an idea, back in twenty eighteen, nineteen, we spent about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in toll fees. It went down in nineteen twenty because of COVID, down to eighty-four thousand because of the reduction of doing everything virtual at that time. So we'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Mr. Jackson.
I like these priorities. Karen, in school finance, where it says, remove the penalty for the local optional homestead exemption. We've talked about this before. And Ms., my colleague, Ms. Heineman, brought this up a couple of months ago. Is the magnitude of this still roughly over ten million dollars? Do we have a recent estimate?
Of the, the, the effect of, of state aid to our district because we offer the optional homestead exemption? Is that what you're referring to? It's actually much more than that. It is, it's fifty-nine million dollars just on, it's actually fifty-nine point five million for the general fund on just the optional homestead exemption. That does not include the free port exemption.
And this, this has no way impacted by the fact that, that we don't receive the taxes. We aren't asking for the state to reimburse us for not taxing our people. We're asking the state not to assume that we have those revenues come in when they allocate the, the tax dollars back. Isn't that correct?
Yes, I think that's a good way to put it, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Blacker.
No, no.
Thank you. Dr. O. Ms. Heineman.
Everybody's running out of gas, but I still have some in my tank. So I'm going to just make a couple of comments and questions. Under the individual graduation committees, I appreciate that the district is still focusing on removing the expiration date for the individual graduation committees. As Dr. Macias said, it's a small number of students, two-hundred and eleven students, that were able to graduate, receive their diplomas, and move on, meaning they can go to college, they can get work. It reminds me of the starfish story that Roy Garcia shares with so many people. That, it may not mean a lot to the big picture, but to that one student, that starfish, it makes a big difference. So I appreciate that we can continue to focus on that, and I think we're going to eventually get that passed. The vouchers, Teresa, I agree, we've not seen that in the last session, but we're hearing it at the federal level. I think that's where we see most of that pressure. And so I think we just need to keep an eye on that from a federal perspective. Investing in safety and security measures, including mental health interventions. This has been such a big focus for our school district, and I appreciate that very much. Something to note, in the last legislative session, there was supposed to be fifty dollars per student allocated for safety measures, including mental health, from the state legislature. At the very last minute, literally the last minute when the state budget was passed, it was changed from fifty dollars per student to nine dollars and seventy-two, nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Huge change. It caught everybody by surprise. The point of this is, we have to stay engaged through the whole process and keep our eyes on this legislation that passes, so we make sure that we're getting everything that we've been, we think we're being promised for the benefit of our students. The last thing about the local control and making sure that there's community input from stakeholders before a charter school is allowed to, is approved for, within our boundaries. When Cyfair ISD wants to open a new school, it's an extensive process. It's years of analyzing data, of asking for tax, stakeholder input, and then seeking taxpayer approval through an election. That's a, a process that ensures it's the right decision for our community versus one person in Austin with all the, all the power to say, yes, you can open a new school here, there, everywhere, anywhere you want. So very important that we continue to, to support and advocate for local control when it comes to building, opening new schools in our, in our school district. Great job, and I'm looking forward to supporting and advocating for these priorities when the session begins.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great report. I totally believe in the priorities that y'all set. So thank you very much. Would it be okay to move this to consent? Everybody? You're okay? Ten D, the board will consider approving the targeted improvement plans for Bain Elementary School and Francon Elementary School. Any concerns or discussions? We have the presentation tonight. Can we move that? I personally would like to have it stand alone. So I'm just gonna, is that okay with everybody? Okay, so that's gonna stand alone. The board will consider approving a waiver of the provisions of the EIA Local Academic Achievement Grading Progress Reports to Parents. Do we have a presentation?
Just very short.
Okay.
Just very short. Our high school principals and the curriculum team are certainly concerned about having some additional time for instruction for our students. We believe that there are gaps in every, every level of our students. And then opportunities to support those students who are struggling, both our connect, our CFISD connect students, and also our, some of our face-to-face students. So our campus leaders identified a way to be able to gain actually some time to be able to provide some of those supports, and that's during the semester exam week. So during this time, as most of you know, we have students who are taking the exam test. We have some that have exempted the, the exam test. And, and then many times, teachers are, teachers and students are prepping for these tests the week before the week of exams. So there is between one to two weeks there that we can gain some extra time with supporting our students if we, if we do not have semester exam tests for this, for this year. And so that would mean that, that, that we wouldn't be giving any semester exam tests. There wouldn't be a need for exemptions because we don't have any semester exam tests, and it's allowing for some additional time for continued instruction or continued support to be able to make up some of the, some of the activities or, or some of the assignments that students may be missing. And so we're asking to, to waive EIA Local so that our campuses do have some additional time to, to work at closing those achievement gaps, to be able to reteach and be able to help our students make up any assignments that they may be missing. So that's what this waiver is for.
Okay. Ms. Heineman.
Okay. I don't know if I tuned out for just a second. It could have happened. But I'm not sure. So why does it say progress reports? Is that just a category? Okay, so that's.
That's just a category. This, this is a policy that, that talks about semester exams. So it's in our policy that we provide semester exams. So in order for us to not give semester exams, we need to waive the policy.
What if students need another, I mean, will teachers provide additional opportunities for students to get great? Like, sometimes you need that semester, that final, to get your grade up, or, you know, how will that be addressed for students?
So, so as you know, the semester exam counts for one-seventh of, of the, of the grade. So teachers will have an opportunity if they want to provide a test, just to, but carrying the same weight as any other test. So teachers will have that opportunity in their classrooms or in their courses to be able to do that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so. I'm processing. Okay, thank you.
Dr. O.
So is this a request to benefit the teachers or the students?
It's a request to benefit our students. It's the opportunity to continue working with our students, to be able to provide some reteach opportunities and provide them some additional time to make up some assignments that they may be missing.
And is this a, a local, this is some, a provision, a policy that we develop, or is it something that came down from the state?
This is our local policy, yes, sir.
All right.
Ms. Blacker.
Just a comment. I like it.
Mr. Jackson.
This is a, a small analogous approach to what we used to have with mastery. We had a mastery pilot that started at Langham Creek High School and then spread to some of the other schools before the, the board decided that it wasn't a good idea. I still like the idea of additional instruction time to try and develop mastery over subject material, whether that, that mastery is bringing up the understanding to sixty or seventy percent, all the way up to ninety or a hundred percent. Additional time in the saddle is, is always good, and I don't have a problem sacrificing test time to try and achieve additional mastery and understanding of the material. I think any ideas that, that y'all can come up with that will permit additional instructional time, and hopefully that will translate into additional learning time for our students, I will wholeheartedly support. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Macias. Appreciate the report. Can we move this to consent? Okay. Ten F, the board will consider approving the Walgreens Experimental Learning Program Agreement. Dr. Heather Bergman, Denise Quebeca, Quebeca, Denise, who's here? Questions only. Anybody have questions? Nope. Can we move that to consent? Thank you. The board will consider approving course offerings for career and technical education and special education. Anybody have any questions concerning this for Dr. Macias? We're okay, moving it to consent. Thank you. Board will consider approving a first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. Ten H one BF Local Board Policies are revised. Ten H two DED Local Compensation and Benefits, Vacations and Holidays Revised. Ten H three DIA Local Employee Welfare, Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment and Retaliation Revised. Ten H four DMD Local Professional Development, Professional Meetings and Visitations Deleted. Ten H five ED Local Organization of Instructions are deleted. Ten H six EI Local Academic Achievement are revised. Ten H seven FD Local Admissions are revised. Ten H eight FDE Local Admissions, School Safety Transfers are revised. Ten H nine FEB Local Attendance, Attendance Accounting Revised. Can we move that to consent, or do we have any questions or concerns on anything? Anybody? Can we move it to consent? Thank you. Either one oh one or ten I. Okay, ten I. The board will consider approving a waiver of DNA Local Performance Appraisal Evaluations of Teachers for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. Brief presentation, Mr. Roy Garcia, Dr. Glenda Horner. Whoa, y'all are up.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. I'm just gonna quickly share, Dr. Henry did a great job earlier, just kind of sharing the why behind many areas that can kind of alleviate their stress, not only from teachers, but others on the campus as well. And one of those that he, he mentioned was the teacher appraisal system for us CF tests. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Glenda Horner, our Director for Professional Learning, give you a nine slide presentation in less than six minutes. Ready to go?
I'll take that challenge. President Covey, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, as school entities adapt and change their models of instruction based on the rapidly changing conditions of COVID-19, so too must these same entities consider the challenge of implementing the full appraisal process for teachers. This evening, the district, at the request of Dr. Henry, comes before you to consider a one-year waiver of DNA Local, thus authorizing the district administration to modify and/or eliminate select requirements and provisions of the CF tests for eligible and designated teachers. The goal of the waiver is to alleviate the anxiety and stress associated with the appraisal process amid a pandemic by leveraging the flexibility provided within Chapter one fifty to adjust the appraisal process where needed for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Prior to coming before you this evening, based on feedback from campus principals and under the leadership of Roy Garcia, the Office of Professional Learning engaged in the process by first assessing current procedures and local policy. Then after consulting with Dr. Henry and the Cabinet, the Offices of Professional Learning, Human Resources, and School Leadership met with principal representatives from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. The steps taken allowed the district to consider whether to bring forward with the submission of the waiver this evening. In assessing current procedures and local policy, the district revisited Chapter one fifty of the Commissioners' Rules Concerning Educator Appraisal, which provides specific requirements for the implementation of teacher appraisal systems. However, districts do have some local authority to adjust the appraisal process where needed, when needed. Chapter one fifty pointed us toward Texas Education Code twenty-one dot one thirty-two C for further clarification. The Texas Education Code indicates that a teacher may be appraised less frequently if the teacher agrees in writing and the teacher's most recent evaluation rated the teacher as at least proficient or the equivalent, and did not identify any area of deficiency. And that the teacher who is appraised less frequently than annually must be appraised at least once during every period of five school years. The statement is also outlined in DNA Legal, which led us to DNA Local. DNA Local currently provides for annual appraisal of teachers. The board waiver brought before you this evening will authorize the administration to waive appraisals just for this present school year for those who are eligible and designated. The one-year waiver would allow the district to waive appraisal for teachers that have been employed. been employed by CFISD for at least one year or greater, and received at least a skilled or the equivalent rating in all domains on the CF test for the most recent full appraisal cycle, which in this case would have been 2018-2019. Teachers will be allowed to decline the waiver and opt to be appraised. If the appraisal, if the teacher's appraisal is waived, the teacher will still participate in the annual goal-setting process, required professional development, and a modified end-of-year conference. As you know, the district is charged with keeping in mind the importance of continued professional growth of teachers within the current educational environment, and through focused discussion, adaptations to current procedures and policies, and ongoing assessment of the current appraisal system, the district can ensure not only compliance with current appraisal regulations, but also the best support possible for all teachers involved. And closing, President Covey, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, as you reflect on the information shared this evening, we welcome your questions and comments regarding this request.
Ms. Heinemann, do you have questions?
No questions. I think it's an excellent idea. Fully support it.
Dr. O?
This provision, this change, the principal will decide which teacher falls under this provision?
It hinges on the 2018-2019, because that was our last full appraisal cycle. So it would hinge on whether or not a teacher exhibited deficiency then or anytime since then. So in a sense, yes, the answer to your question is, it is up to principal discretion, but it's grounded in the ratings that were in that last formal appraisal cycle.
Okay. Let's say the teacher fell under the provision of, had been rated and evaluated highly or properly, and this could apply. Can the principal decide, well, I don't want to do that with this teacher?
Only if that teacher had exhibited performance concerns.
Okay.
So it's not, like, purely at their discretion, you get to waive, you don't get to waive. It has to be rooted in what's happening in that classroom, and it has to be documented.
Okay.
And again, Dr. O, if I may, just the whole purpose of this is alleviate the stress of the teachers, and this is something that the principals brought forth as well to Dr. Henry to assist with that. So you go back to the 18-19, if they scored in that area, that was articulated by Dr. Horner earlier, then yes, they would be exempt from that unless a teacher said, you know what, no, I do want to be appraised this year.
Yeah, I like it. I'm just trying to make sure that it's applied fairly and easily.
It's a fair process. Yes, sir, it is a fair process.
All right.
Ms. Blacksher? Nothing. Mr. Jackson?
I like the basic concept. First, the language appears to be very straightforward. Has council reviewed this and agreed that this does not run afoul of state laws?
We took it originally both...
No, I'm asking council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So if we can reconfirm that for Monday, when we actually take a vote?
She has.
Yeah, we can do that.
We discussed it, we had a meeting with Marty.
Is there an appeal process for a teacher if they do not believe that they should be reviewed, and if they believe that their prior evaluation was sufficient, that they should not be evaluated?
I can ask, Glenda, there's a process already in place. If a teacher does not agree with their appraisal, they can request a second appraisal. That must...
Well, and that's not what I'm asking, Roy.
Okay.
You know, in this day and time, I want our teachers to feel as if none of them are in danger of being singled out. We're asking teachers to do things they've never done before. Teachers may have received a very strong evaluation during normal times, and there may be struggles. I just want to make certain that we handle it fairly with as soft of a hand as we can. And clearly, Linda has already told us that we need additional instruction time. So that, and Linda said that we need at least two weeks of additional instruction time. So I know what that means. And I know what that means from an evaluation of a teacher perspective. And I like the idea of saying, hey, nobody gets a free pass, but we're going to lessen the stress, and I want to make certain that we do, in fact, follow through and lessen the stress as evenly and covering as many people as possible.
Mr. Jackson, just to answer that, the only people that will be evaluated are those people with documented deficiencies or first-year teachers. That's the only ones.
And I like the idea of documented deficiencies from a prior period
Right.
as opposed to the current cycle where everything is up in there. I have talked to spotlight teachers, not just in our district, but in other districts, and the challenges they're facing are tremendous.
I think we're on the same page with that, because that's why we're bringing this forward, because this year is so different, and not to add that additional stress to evaluate a teacher during these unprecedented times. So we kind of look at this, the teacher evaluation and support system, we're going to remove the evaluation and put more emphasis on the support and supporting the teacher. So that's the goal and the thought behind this. And I can assure you, in leading the principals, that I'll make sure it's very clear, I think it is already, but I'll make sure it's very clear on the comments that you're making, and we're all on the same page with that.
Well, good. You know, John brought this up very delicately, but I thought he made some very important points, and I just wanted to review them once again. So thank you.
Just to add to that, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Ogletry, everything that we've presented tonight is to try to relieve the burden on our teachers and staff and our students in this most difficult year, and this will be 100% positive, I promise. All right, we moved this to consent. Thank y'all for the report. We're moving it to consent. 10J, the board will consider approving the Memorandums of Understanding and Interlocal Agreements with Partner Universities, Colleges, and Alternative Certification Programs for Student/Teacher Placements for the 2020-2021 school year. Are there any questions for Deborah Stewart Archurita? Okay, can we move that to consent? Texas State's on there, so I'm fine. 10K, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the notice to Diane Riggs regarding discharge of her employment with the district. This may be discussed in a closed session. Are we needing a closed session tonight? It's not required, as long as this board will choose to rescind the notice that you... When was that, last month? Two months ago. Okay. It's not a bad thing. Does anybody have a problem with this? Can we move this to consent? You want it to stand alone. Move to consent? All right, moving to consent. 10L, the board will consider the approval and execution of the plat for CFISD Hancock Elementary School. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. 10M, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda items. 10M1, Aruba Maintenance. Rather interesting. All right. 10M2, College Readiness and Career Interest Test. 10M3, Parking Lot Stripping. 10M4, Restaurant Catering and Delivery Services. 10M5, School Buses. 10M6, Spirit Apparel and Promotional Items. Any questions? Can we move this to consent? I'm sorry, Dr. Ogletry?
Do you go to Aruba to do the maintenance? I like to be on that trip.
I think what I read was the president will be going to the Aruba and maintaining... You may get impeached. All right, can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Okay. 10M, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors, and authorize a superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 10N1, 2019 Bain and Leder Elementary School renovations. 10N2, 2020 Cyfair Federal Credit Union Stadium Athletic Lighting Replacements. Any questions or concerns?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The lighting, Roy, is that the lighting that's at Priggin has already been redone, right? It's beautiful. It just looks, the field looks amazing with that lighting. It's just so clean. So I'm glad to see that we'll have that at the Berry Center, at the CFSU.
It was part of the 2019 bond program.
It's lovely, thank you.
Anybody else? Can we move that to consent? We okay? Thank you. Superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, November 9, 2020. We are adjourned. Whoa. Hold it, hold it. Hold it. For you adjourned, just very quickly, one announcement, there is a book at your desk, a very thin book, that we're doing a book study here with our leadership team throughout the district related to some of the things that you did in your resolution related to diversity. And then there's another book that was left at your desk that was not left by the administration or school district, so I just wanted to be very clear with that. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Henry. We are adjourned.